I will call over to the 28 July 22nd. Union Bid and Sale Council stands for the question.
The question is to testify in the United States of America to serve the public's justice. One nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice.
We need a motion in a second for the agenda.
I'll second.
Give that to Stephanie.
Thank you.
Any changes, discussion?
Yes, Mayor. One item for the mayor and the council. We need to remove item D out of the consent agenda. That donation was actually written out to the fire relief and we weren't aware of that until we got the check, so it's not the city, so we just need to remove item D out of the consent agenda. Thank you.
Any other changes?
If we have corrections for the minutes, they can still stay in the consent agenda, correct? Or do they have to get pulled if there's corrections?
No, you should go.
They can stay, right?
During your discussion, you can make the, we can make them.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Agenda carries five to zero. Onto consent, I need a motion in a second. Motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So for the council meeting minutes from our last meeting about the DCM Farms final plat, we had explicitly said that the agreement was to pay $2 million for the hundred, not up to $2 million, so I want the up to struck from the record. So the agreement is to pay $2 million and that anything extra and the excess funds would go, so that was the correction. And then also just in addition, we had also explicitly asked that the document come back to the consent agenda and it's not technically in the minutes, so if we could add that to the minutes that it's coming back for the consent agenda when it is completed, which I believe, when will it be? It's not on this one, is it next meeting?
Should be the next meeting.
Okay.
As long as we can get developer and us to come to a mutual agreement, and that's why it's not on here tonight.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Hang on a second. Question, item B in the payment of claims. Chief Enga, I think this one maybe is, you've got a couple of expenses for automotive emergency, emergency automotive technologies, is that who we use for lights and radios and stuff on new cars?
Yep, there are outfitters, squad outfitters.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else have any? All right.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
It's maybe not to a particular item, but we have like car wash charges on here continuously. Do we have a, can we buy a package or like, because it's like $39 on this one, $39, and it's like every time it's that, it's like the same amount, I'm just like, is there a way that we can? Yeah.
I don't know if that's one car wash, you just said car wash.
Is that a monthly fee?
I think it's a monthly fee.
Members of, members of council, we have two, chief one, chief two, we have them, Kevin has is with Mr. Car Wash, I have one that's closer to my house, but it's a one-time fee for unlimited wash you each month.
So we typically have car wash packages that we buy, so we have one with QuickTrip for like the police, the cars, they have one there, otherwise we have a couple with other various car washes and it's one price and then you get a limited wash for the whole month. So if you see a one-off car wash, it's probably-
How many times do we wash in a month?
Quite a bit.
They wash the trucks every time they come back, so it's like, I don't-
Okay. This isn't for the trucks, right?
No.
This is for the pickups and vehicles, yeah.
I'm just wondering, like, and I'm not saying that I don't agree that they should be washed, I was just wondering if like, that was just a wash or is that a subscription to be washed?
No, that's a subscription to be washed, and I bet you they use it, it has to be at least four, more than four times a month, I bet you it's-
I believe that, I was just wondering, just for clarification.
Probably twice a week, I would guess, it's probably washed, something like that. Probably more in the winter, too.
It's that bum, I haven't washed it yet. All right.
I have another question for clarity for the RFP for audit services.
Yes.
What was special about 2022, I'm just curious. The year 2022, we're going for the award, there was some award.
Oh, so we're trying to, so the idea is that we'd like to go for the distinguished financial award, financial statement award, it's not anything more than just basically says that we do a good job with our financial statements, it's kind of a pat on the back for us, doesn't do anything for us financially really, besides we get certified that says that we did a good job.
But 2022s?
I'm gonna guess I meant 2025.
Okay, that's kind of what I figured, so that's why I wanted to clarify that, so make sure it says 2025. And then, and I feel really stupid for having this question, is the mayor elected every two years or four years?
Two.
It says four years in the document.
Okay, I will update that as well.
Some say it's a four, it's up to the city.
Well, that's why I was like, wait, I swear it was every two years, and I could've probably looked it up, but anyway, so those are just two things I found in that, so nothing-
We did use another city's one, so I did my best to update it as possible, so.
Sometimes copy paste, you know.
It was not corporate.
Zero four years.
So I think, let's see here.
I will make that adjustment, though, thank you very much, Councilwoman Van Asten.
I also have a question about the amendment for the accessory structure height in the agricultural districts. It says we're changing it, which I like what we're changing it to, but, so this is on page 65 of the document, it says accessory building height shall be limited to the height of the principal dwelling on the property or 35 feet, whichever is less. Would that not completely undermine this entire thing, whichever is less?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there is a clause before that section that's not being changed that essentially limits with the CUP that it's 35 feet, so with the conditional use permit, the proposal would be to exceed the principal dwelling height up to 35 feet by way of conditional use permit.
So on A, they still have to get a CUP, but-
If they want to exceed the principal dwelling height, but that CUP would be not to exceed 35 feet, and essentially that would, the conditional use permit would trigger the submittal of building plans that would identify what the proposed height of the structure would be, so it wouldn't be an ambiguous condition of approval that it can't exceed 35 feet.
That came up with the planning commission maybe two minutes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just, it came, because it says conditional use permit and then it has that stuff, so that looked like it was part of the conditional use permit, so that implies that even with the conditional use permit, it's whichever is less.
If you want, I can include that section, basically what that, there's the section that's not included shows what the requirements would be to meet that conditional use permit, and that includes that language about the, the height of the structure is limited to the maximum allowed height in the zoning district, which is 35 feet.
Okay, all right, I think I'm okay, we can always fix it again, it turns out that it's not okay, okay. And then I had one more question on J, the outdoor surfacing requirement, did we want to limit it, put an explicit limit on it, let's see here, it's on page 71. About, it says, so it says consideration may be given to allow a portion of the outdoor storage area to be surfaced with crush aggregate, do we want to limit that to like 50%, 75%, 25%, or do you want to just leave it as a portion and leave each individual case up to what a portion is?
Also, Kim, I'd be okay with leaving it up to the-
Individual?
Individual, yeah.
To the project.
To the project, yeah.
I would say there should be a criteria there. Each, each particular build has parking stall requirements, correct?
Correct.
You wouldn't want to have 80% crush blacktop and 20% parking if, to me, if that took up most of the lot.
Well, does specify that it's for the outdoor storage, not the parking?
So then we're good.
Okay, okay, I just wanted-
Just outdoor storage, it's fine.
Okay. Okay, those are my things.
Right, anybody else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Consent passes, five to zero, onto open forum. Is anybody here for open forum? Come on up, limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. State your name and address, no council action will be taken and items will be referred back to staff.
I'm Mercy Grover, 11320 Fernbrook Lane, and I wanted to ask a question. Our motto is live the difference. What does that mean? Do you guys have any idea what that means? On the wall behind you, on the store, on the city's stationery, what does that mean? I see no difference between the houses being built in Maple Grove and the houses being built across the street from me, and if a developer wants to build houses, he should be responsible for all the infrastructure. After all, he needs the roads to build the houses. We shouldn't be involved in paying for any of the roads, we shouldn't be making deals for any of the roads, we shouldn't be issuing variances left and right to help the developers. The city should be helping the current residents who are affected by the builder. I suggest you change the motto of Dayton to, look, we're gonna be just like Maple Grove. There's no difference happening here, what is the difference? Every time you take a vote on something, ask yourself if this was, if this will make us different in a good way from our neighbors. If this is not gonna make us different in a good way from our neighbors, then you need to vote no on whatever you're voting on. If you can't find a reason to make us different, you shouldn't be sitting up there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on forward.
Keith Grover, 113th and Fernbrook. One of the things I wanted to bring up tonight is something that seems to be a reoccurring issue, I've talked to Hayden about it many times and Zach and I have talked about it, is the signage for development. We have a sign regulation on what size of sign they're supposed to put up, I don't think any of them are putting up the correct sign to start with, and the only time they change is when Zach or Hayden or somebody from the city actually gives them a call or sends them a letter telling them they have to change. I wonder if we couldn't be a little more proactive or direct the staff to be a little more proactive on that, for these developers are actually working in the city, when they first come into the city, or for the ones that are here now, we know who they are, if we couldn't just send them all a re-notification saying, here, this is what Dayton sign audits is, if you have signs that aren't in compliance with this, please fix them so that they are. I mean, Tennessee was too hot to do anything outside for an old retiree like me, so I just took a drive around the city, I wanted to look at some of the newer areas that we've developed, some of them look really nice, but a few of them that jumped out at me, especially dealing with these signs, on Rush Creek Parkway, in Glacier Lane, Lennar Sundance Greens has a sign that's probably close to 10 by 10, that's nowhere near, you know, the four by eight sign that we require, that's been there for quite a while. Also on Rush Creek Parks Way, or Parkway, in Kingsu Lane, Hanson Final Sundance Greens, that sign's gotta be at least eight by 10, it's huge, they're like billboards, they're not the signage that we, you know, or that you guys wanted them to have. Up on the north end, in the development along Dayton River Road, that's a development to me that really jumps out as being a real nice place for people to move into, I like the way it looks, I like the roads they put in there, but on Pioneer Parkway, which is the major parkway you went in there, there is a huge sign there that deals with Riverwalk, Pool and Clubhouse sign, and if you follow into the development, and I forgot to write down the address for it, there's another sign in the development that's just as big and oversized as the one that's out on Dayton Road. Those are just a few that jumped out at me, I didn't hit every road in the city, but, and these are ones in addition to, I've already talked to Zach and Hayden about before. I just don't know what, I mean, I could keep pointing them out, I don't know that that's my responsibility to do that, but I, you know, what can we do from the city's standpoint to put these folks on record that, hey, this is the signage they're supposed to put up, and they shouldn't put out bigger signs than this, and if they continue to do that, and some of them have, some of them have, across the street from me, two times I've had to call in and point out that the sign out there is 10 by 10 or 12 by 12, from the same developer, we shouldn't have to do that, there should be some kind of a progressive scale that the first time maybe they get a buy, well, maybe the buy should be reduced to telling them the first time when they start developing, here's the sign ordinance, if you violate the sign ordinance, here's the penalty for it, here's the second step, and it should progressively get worse, if they're just gonna flip the bird at you and just ignore you, which is what I see is going on. The other thing is a safety issue for me. On Rush Creek Parkway in Ithaca, the center medians along the divided parkway that we have there, those things, every week they get worse because the growth of the foliage and the flowers and the shrubs and everything else that we allow them to plant between the lanes gets higher and higher. If you're sitting on Ithaca to try to cross Rush Creek Parkway headed south, you can't see the cars coming headed east on Rush Creek Parkway, you have to nose all the way out into the middle of the intersection because that stuff on the, on the median in the center is so high before you can actually look down to see if any cars are coming, and the same thing is true if somebody's coming through on the parkway, that stuff, whatever you want to call it, flowers or shrubs or whatever, is at such a height that you can't see kids crossing the street, they can leave the curb on the north side of Rush Creek and come all the way across the westbound lane of Rush Creek and be in the middle, and you're coming the other direction, you don't see them till they're literally in front of your car. We really have to get that stuff out of there, I mean, the flowers look pretty, I understand that looks great, but pretty is not something that we should be putting above people's health and people's safety, and that's really, really screwed up, that whole, and there's an, if you drive out through there, there are several roads in there that are the same way, some are better than others because they have lower growth, but they're, most of them are, I mean, they're like, the stuff is like this high, and the median in the middle of the road is already two feet higher than the road, so you're just building a wall, so people can't see anything. If you, and a good example of that is on the Pioneer Parkway, that's up on, off from Dayton Road, if you drive into that development on that parkway, when you get to the intersections, they're not like that at all, and the reason they're not like that is because intersections are big enough to turn a semi around in, where we would, on Rush Creek Parkway, you'd have to clear off the shrubbery that's along the sides of the road in the median, there they've already cleared off, they made the whole, made a blacktop, so it's like 40, 50 feet on each side of the intersection, there's nothing, so there's no place for any of that to grow. That's a really open area and those intersections, when I drove through, I went, wow, this is really a safe intersection, you got a perfect line of sight view of all the corners coming through the intersection, people crossing there can see the cars, that's just the exact opposite of what we get on Rush Creek Parkway, and I really think that we should direct staff to look at that, to see if we can't fix that before some little kid gets run over, the speed limit in there is what, 35, right? We know how fast people drive when the speed limit's 35, and if you can't see a kid until the last 30 feet before it gets to your car, you know, I don't want to see what happens, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Keith, I know a year or so ago now, that doesn't mean, and it might be a while since then, I know Marty did clear the signs, a sign down on Bolton, that was a very big builder's sign, but I don't know if you've been back at it since then, it's kind of like the speed limit signs, people don't obey them either, until you get a ticket or something.
Well, that's the whole point of the progressive thing, right? Get their attention.
I don't disagree.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come forward.
Thank you. Oh, I think this is on the agenda.
This is gonna be on the agenda, maybe-
Oh, so we'll actually invite you up to speak during the item.
During the item?
Yeah. We're looking for item K.
The curb sideways.
The curb side, it's gonna be on the agenda.
Thank you.
Anybody else who are open for, anybody online? Okay, we'll move on to staff consult, council updates.
Can I just ask one question?
Okay, is it gotta do with something on the agenda?
Yes, it does.
Okay, then we'll bring you up later.
Well, I gotta know if we can talk during this part, on this curb sideways concept plan review?
Yep.
Yep.
Can we talk when that goes up?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, I only have one item just to let you know and FYI, I know that Jason will probably bring it up a little bit and he knows more information, but South Diamond Lake Roads project will start tomorrow, that's the planned start for the concrete work near the elementary school, to get the Safe Roads to School stuff, so that was approved during the consent agenda, so that will be starting tomorrow, and then roughly two to three weeks after that, the Millinole Lake project will start, something like that.
I would guess, yep.
So appreciate again the coordination with the Safe Roads to School stuff, we've kind of thrown in the last minute, the idea is to make the project one cohesive project versus making it done part this year and part next year, and then we have cold cuts and issues within pavement, so appreciate the last minute.
Is it going to be done in stages or?
One piece, as far as I'm aware.
The, yeah, the pedestrian crossing will be constructed completely and then they'll do all of the Millinole Lake together.
But like that, all of South Diamond Lake from, will be closed that entire while?
No, they're gonna do it under traffic, so there will be flaggers, there will be delays, but it'll be open.
But it will be open, okay, thank you.
Everything will be open, but again, just under-
As someone who lives there, I want to know how I'm gonna get in and out of my house.
Total sense, yeah, you should be able to drive on it, Millinole Lake, you just have to drive across the rumble strips if they don't have pavement down, but you're good to go.
Okay.
That's all I got, thank you very much.
Any?
I have a couple. Well, head treatment plant, the Masons, have been working on the exterior block, unfortunately rain stopped play for them for a few days, they're not gonna be back up there till Monday, I believe now. Inside the building, they've been working on the process pipe working, and that's, there's a lot of pipe work on the pressure vessels already gone in, so that's moving along, even though we can't keep going on the outside. Parks irrigation projects, last, last time I spoke, we're struggling with the electric companies, they have since got a couple of the places down, the power is available at Hayden Hills, Iron Gardens, and River Hills is scheduled for power on August 10th or 11th. Elsie Stevens and Hayden Hills need the wells connected to the power, Iron Gardens is already to go for irrigation startup, and Sundance is ready for irrigation startup as well, so we'll keep moving along with that. Area 21 is moving along, again slowly because of the rain and stuff, we did find some soil corrections that need to be done up there on the parking lot, which means we're gonna add some extra quantity of sand underneath the parking lot to make it a stable sub base, and we'll be adding fabric there, so a big quantity overrun, so a little bit on those, but I'm not sure what the cost is on that yet. Playground equipment, I did get revised quotes from Pro Playgrounds, I'm looking at those, I'm doing reference checking with some of the references that they've sent us, I'm also gonna go back to Game Time to see that their quotes are still good, that'll be going in front of the park commissioner, the August meeting, and then coming to you guys with their recommendation. Unfortunately, we had to make a decision to cancel the chain mile in concert tomorrow because of the availability that's coming in, it's a difficult decision to make, but, you know, you gotta, there's nowhere else that we can hold the event, so we're trying to reschedule that one. Elsie Stevens' master plan, the community survey closes this Friday, I think we have something like 170 responses so far, once that data is evaluated, concepts will be started, but they've started putting pen to paper a little bit on the information that I've got already, that's about all I have.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, on Thursday, August 7th, I'll be sending out a hyper reach, our emergency communication notification to the neighborhood in that area, fire departments can be conducting some training with the Minnesota Air Rescue Team, so there'll be a state patrol helicopter, doing some landings and takeoffs in that vicinity of Elsie Stevens, along the riverbanks, practicing picking up firefighters from the riverbanks and if canoes and so forth get in that area, so want the community to be aware.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council, just wanted to thank everybody who could make it out to training on Wednesday, I know, I appreciate it, and all my officers appreciate it, so thank you.
We get to do that again next week?
Next week?
Next week?
Sure. I mean, that was the first run, we get better with two or three cracks.
It was fun, you're still gonna die, but-
I didn't die.
You had to die. Nothing? Jason?
There will be an open house held for the study along the River Road corridor that the county is doing, that'll be held tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Mississippi crossings in Champlin, and it's open to the public for updates on, on the findings of the report.
I got nothing?
Well, that was gonna be my thing, but Jason said it, so go to the open house if you, not even just if you live on Dayton River Road, but like, it affects all of us, it's one of our major corridors, and it is open to the public. I also was just curious, we had talked about progressive finding, and Keith brought up, you know, like, we know we've got some repeat offenders, I was just wondering where we were in the process of that, or if that had died, or if it's still something we're talking about?
So that'll be an ordinance amendment, I'm gonna rely on John for that.
We issued a memorandum to the council and didn't get any feedback.
Well, I got feedback from one.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, yes, yep, two.
Two.
They'll bring something back to council soon, they'll work on that with John and Hayden and bring that back to the council, but it was something that was brought up, and I'm aware.
Okay, and then I was wondering about the A3 update, if we'd heard any word where that's at, meetings, next steps at council, where-
We have not heard a response back from that council as of today.
Okay.
Zero response whatsoever from our memo that was responded, sent out, which was two weeks ago now, Wednesday, and I sent that out to the council last week, so, yes, more than ten, yes.
They had 10 days or something, right?
Yep.
We told them to do it in 10 days.
So-
So we have heard no response, I think the idea is that we were still gonna move forward with the plan discussion based on the last council meeting, is that we still have it at the planning commission and then following the council, just based on the last conversation we had, but we'd still like to talk with that council before those things happen, so-
Ideally.
We are still moving forward regardless, but we'd like to have a conversation before we continue to move forward, so we will push on that council again.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is that it?
That was it.
So, I was gonna bring up the River Hills sign, because it's in River Hills for Riverwalk, and it's a honkin' big sign, and that's not the first time, and I don't think it's the second time, these progressive findings, I think that's one thing I easily get behind is, is the second letter we have to send it, and comes with an administrative fine or something, I don't know if we can enforce that, but-
We can, yeah, so that would be the process at this point would be to find the owner of the sign essentially, but we can do that process, and that's most certainly fine with city staff, which ends up coming down to how much time do we have and how many can we send out, there are multiple, as long as, you know, and I appreciate Keith bringing those to our attention, and we can send letters and comment them, and sometimes they'll respond, sometimes they won't, so we do our best and we give them the 30 days that it is, and then 30 days after that, we do a $500 fine, well, by that time, they take 60 days, they remove it, and then it goes back after.
And they put it in a sign, yeah. Okay, well, yeah, if we can somehow, and I don't, you know, I don't know if that means we want to apply this, you know- means we want to apply this, you know, progressive concept, those things, but to me, those big signs are an easy one.
Yep. Well aware, we'll, you know, we'll keep posted and let you guys know. And Hayden and I are working on those together, so.
You know, just a thought on that, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we can certainly, uh, reach out to them and have them, um, uh, fill out a, a temporary sign permit or something like that to kind of have it on the record that if there is a development sign out there, we are aware of it. We're aware of the location and the size. Um, historically that, it just hasn't happened. So we can certainly do that.
Uh, would we limit it to like a size again or?
Yeah, the, the requirement for temporary development signs is thirty-two square feet
and no taller than eight feet in height.
Right, but what would the permit apply to?
That specific sign that they want to put up for, uh, to.
Because the issue is, we don't even know that they're here.
Correct.
If they've at least filled out the form, we at least know where they're supposed to be and we know to go check on them.
Yep. The only way for us to find out is either somebody lets us know, because unfortunately, I'd love to say I get out and about in the community often, I don't.
But, but if they don't know or don't care about a s- a size requirement, why would they care about a permit requirement?
Right.
It's possible, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But could we add that to the fee then? Like you also didn't fill out the form, so here's another five hundred dollar fee?
Um, it wouldn't be an additional, but.
Well, they'd care the most if Martin just takes a chainsaw and.
We have done that before too.
I know we have. Did that happen in Bolton?
Councilmember Van Aston, that would, at that point, it would be a double fee essentially for having them fill out the sign permit retroactively.
Well, yeah. I wonder, see what you can come up with, but.
Sure. I like the chainsaw idea.
We can have both and, a fine and a chainsaw.
No, I did just want to say thank you to Chief Hanga and, uh, the rest of the police department for, um, giving us that opportunity last week. It was really a glimpse into the kinds of situations that the, our officers can come across. And, uh, I'll just speak for myself. Um, I got shot every time, so. You know, the, the, aside being a little bit embarrassed about that, the, you know, it gives you a glimmer into the, the kinds of situations that can come up. And we expect our officers to make the right decision every time with a really limited amount of time to assess the situation. So it was, um, eye opening to me and I appreciated the opportunity.
I'm nothing.
Nothing. All right. Let's move on to council business, item K, curb sideways. And for those that want to speak, well, I'll let you speak after, um, staff and applicant have a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so curb sideways had received a conditional use permit in twenty twenty-two for a transfer station for, uh, yard waste. Uh, the operation began in April of twenty twenty-five. Uh, this, they are applying or intend to apply for an EAW, uh, to allow other types of waste. So this is a municipal solid waste, organic construction debris, um, and recycling. Uh, the facility itself is not being proposed to expand. There'd be no noticeable changes to the property itself. It's just the number, the amount of waste, the types of waste that would be coming into the site. Um, this is a concept plan, so there's no formal approval or denial of it. The intention is to gauge, um, opinions, recommendations from each individual council member. Um, that's kind of the quick summary with it. Uh, question of what is a transfer station? What do they actually do? Uh, so this is, uh, the transfer station is the building that's on the left photo. Essentially, garbage trucks would come in, uh, dumpster loads inside the building and then a front end loader scoops them up and, and puts it into a larger truck, uh, which then goes to its, uh, whether it's a, a processing station or its final destination, uh, whatever, for whatever waste that is. So in this case, we're just talking about yard waste. Um, the permitting process, uh, again, this is a concept plan. Um, the next stage is to apply for an, uh, environmental assessment worksheet or EAW is the acronym. Uh, this is reviewed by the, uh, EQB or the Environmental Quality Board and, and the MPCA. So it is not the city in this case, um, because it's a waste facility. Um, with the EAW, the state determines whether another, a more intensive environmental study is required or not, or if the EAW is accepted. Um, it would then come back to the city, uh, for an ordinance amendment to allow other waste other than yard waste as a transfer station or in a transfer station as a conditional use permit. And then curbside would have to apply for a conditional use permit for those other ways. So this is sort of step one of a long process. Uh, the EAW itself is, is expected to last, uh, twelve to fourteen months for its writing and review. Uh, so if there's a change in the actual land use as a conditional use permit, this would be, I would say, one to two years from now. With a conditional use permit, um, this is a permitted use with conditions. The conditions are intended to, to mitigate any, uh, potential nuisance factors. So in this case, we're looking at nuisance factors such as noise, uh, visual, noise, odor, litter and traffic. Uh, visually, uh, the building itself would not change. Uh, it would just sit as it is. Uh, noise with different types of ways, you're likely to have different types of noises. So, and for example, yard waste typically doesn't have or is a lighter, uh, material than construction debris, as an example. Uh, with odor, different wastes will have different odors. The same thing with litter. Uh, so recycling, you might have lighter weight, items that are lighter weight than you would have with, uh, yard waste and traffic. Um, currently the operation is operating below its capacity. Um, if it's operating at capacity, it's still operating as it was intended when, in twenty-two, uh, conditional use permit was approved. Comments from the planning commission? Uh, the commission was supportive, and this is individually, uh, supportive of adding construction demolition debris. Uh, there was not support for municipal solid waste and organics. Um, they also, uh, commission recommended installing doors and was concerned about increased traffic on East Front Lake Road. Uh, the EA, EDA, uh, was supportive of the project as it was proposed, so with the additional waste. And, uh, we do have the applicant here for any questions that council may have.
I can start with an easy one. Um, who is the environmental quality board?
I couldn't tell you individually. So it, it's a function of the MPCA.
Okay, that's my question. Is where that, what government unit that was affiliated with?
Anybody else have any?
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
For staff, I guess, uh, on one of the resident pieces of paper here, and I don't remember back three years ago when we approved this thing. Um, there's some statements here. Truck parking restricted to thirty trucks parked in the air, in the parked area. Apparently that's not followed. I mean, we don't, I don't know how, how we track any of these. Uh, there's four bullet points here that all of them are, uh, accusing of not following the guidelines when it was approved.
The CUP?
Yeah. What are we doing to, um, check on that? Or, uh, I, I think with the guidelines in place, we do have to track these things other than approving them and just forgetting them on them.
Sure. So as far as, you know, I'll back up a little bit. So we did receive, I believe it was, uh, three letters from residents plus a, a response from curbside. Uh, that was provided to council as just, uh, paper items prior to the council meeting tonight. So I'm a short turnaround for reviewing that. Um, as far as checking, uh, to see if, uh, curbside is compliant with the, the conditional use permit, um, our intent as staff is to do annual inspections of all CUPs and IUPs. We, we've not been able to do that just because of time. Um, but that is the intent of going to all these different businesses or uses, um, with the original, uh, resolution and, and just seeing are they still in compliance with those conditions. So we have about forty or so of those since, I don't know, I'm going to say the last twenty or thirty years. Um, as far as the individual conditions, so the resolution approving this is included in the packet. Um, I'll say that there were, when this project was approved in twenty twenty-two, it was both curbside and MTL. And they're the same owner, same developer. So there's a lot of conversation of, um, requirements that were specific to one site that may carry over to the other and vice versa. Um, for parking, I, the site plan does include, uh, parking for essentially dump trucks. And I believe that those are in compliance. There are many more than what thirty trucks are shown. So that might've been a statement that was given at the council meeting back in twenty twenty-two, but that's not what was approved in the site plan. Um, the one thing to note is, um, you know, the, the curbside does offer a public drop off site. Um, that was not part of the original twenty twenty-two, uh, approval.
For yard waste?
For, uh, or for anything, for, uh, yeah. So if I'm going to try to get rid of, I don't know, a couch or something, I can take it to curbside today. Um, that was not a part of the twenty twenty-two approval. So Scott, I don't know if that answered your questions.
No, I wouldn't, uh, I don't really care about the, uh, if and if it, that's between curbside if they want to take that or not. I don't, I don't have, it's, it's, it's either that or Marty's going to have to pick it up along the highway someplace. Um, so that's a, that's a good, I think that benefits the city itself. Um, I don't know if that answered my question or not, but sooner or later we have to, uh, if we're making these rules on these CUPs, we gotta, we gotta follow them.
Yeah, but otherwise it's just complaint basis.
Yeah. The only thing I can remember about this deal was the, uh, the fees when, permit fees when the building went in and everything. It was a fiasco getting that solved, so. Anyway, we'll see where this goes.
How many, have we got? I mean, somewhere I thought I seen we'd have any complaints. We haven't received any complaints since they opened?
No.
They've only been open three months.
With my operating.
I mean, but like the part that's going to trigger complaints has only been happening for three months. We've had the first, yeah, the yard waste and the first opportunity where the residents actually felt like they could be heard. We have, quite frankly, I would call an outpouring of complaints. So I think it's disingenuous to say that there are.
They'll let you come up and.
No complaints.
We have not, yeah. So Mayor, Members of Council, so to answer the question that you had asked is, have you received active complaints prior to the concept plan being on the agenda?
Prior to today.
Is zero. Um, obviously you have the ones in front of you based on the ones from the concept plan being on the agenda between planning commission and now. And then obviously we said letters and notifications out to people, so, but.
Have you, uh, staff talked to, so my understanding is organics is the smell problem? Is that kind of?
I would think so.
Anybody talking to Maple Grove to see how they deal with it or, uh, is it Brooklyn Park? Is that the other, or where's the other one?
Maple, oh, Maple Grove, yard waste would be the largest.
I mean, but organics is different than yard waste.
But I thought they also took organics.
I'm not aware of them taking organics.
Yeah, I don't think they take, I know they take yard waste, but.
Yep. I'm not aware of them taking organics. And I don't know another, sorry, Mayor, Members of Council, I don't know if they, anybody else does, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm sure they do, but it's just, I don't know where. We have one organics place that you can go to within the city and drop them off, and that's the Steel Public Works site. Um, as long as you go through the training or whatever with Hennepin County, but I don't know where that is go, where that goes to be processed. I'm not sure. Since it's handled by Republicans.
And just when we're talking around organics, it's, uh, like food waste is included.
Yep.
Organics is not yard waste. I mean, food waste.
Yep, food waste.
Yes.
Okay, I guess.
Yeah, when we did dive into, I've got some suggestions on, uh, some other criteria here that we can maybe do.
I do have concerns as to how and understand, you know, the applicant, you might as well come on up.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused how they, was it, it was MTL that originated this thing? How did they agree? I mean, one of the conditions on the CUP was that no wait, nothing was stored overnight. They had to know that they weren't going to store, that they were going to be storing stuff overnight.
I, I couldn't answer that.
Yeah, I just, I doubt you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I was not here at the time as well. I can say that since we began operating, uh, the transfer station, we've been open and honest with the city about the operations and.
Use the microphones a little closer so we can hear in the background.
Sure.
Couple of, we can hear fine, but the rest of it is just very, very, very quiet.
Okay. You can just forward that to me.
Yes.
Please.
If I put back on, you can probably have a, well, Dennis answered that, yeah, asked that question a little bit.
Okay. Does anybody remember what I asked?
You asked how they, um, hold it overnight. Hold the waste overnight? How would you know that?
You're good? Okay.
Okay.
See, uh, one of the CUP requirements was that stuff doesn't stay overnight. So, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Matt Herman, um, chief operating officer of curbside waste. Uh, I can't speak to the conditions and conversations of twenty twenty-two and how that led to be. Uh, when we began operating the facility earlier this year in April, uh, we had conversations with the city at the time and have, have done everything that we can to manage any nuisance conditions that could be there. Uh, the nature of a transfer station is the route trucks let pick up your recycling and trash and yard waste throughout the day. Uh, when they can't environmentally or economically get to an end disposal facility, they have to drop that material off someplace so that it can be aggregated into a larger, more efficient truck and trailer and brought to a, uh, an end disposal facility. The nature of that really just requires it to be done the next day. The, as everybody's yard waste and trash recycling is getting picked up throughout the day, most of the disposal facilities are ending their days at three, four, five o'clock in the, in the afternoon. So there is no time to run routes, aggregate and transfer to a processing facility in that same day. So we understood, uh, that condition, uh, to mean that really we need to take every step possible to mitigate any nuisances. So every day that we have operated, we have, we have cleaned the tipping floor every night and we have everything loaded in trailers, uh, covered, transported and ready to go.
So I guess at a minimum, regardless of what we do, we almost have to modify that CUP, right?
That is correct.
Maybe you have to put a twenty-four hour layer, whatever we want to do, but clearly it sounds like it can't be met.
Yeah. So one thing I'm not too clear on, Mayor, Members of Council, is if that item was related to leaving it on the tipping floor for, for overnight, or if it was within the facility as in on the grounds at, at one time. the facility as in on the grounds at, at one time, I'd have to go back and re-watch the meeting to understand what that fully meant for no overnight. I understood it to be nothing onsite, period. That's what I understood it to be, but I don't know if that was intended to be something on the tipping floor like Matt had mentioned where it would be cleaned up, put in the truck, covered, and then ready to go right away tomorrow morning. So I don't know that answer, but either way, we did a look at doing that CUP adjustment.
Had that been explained at the time, we would have been okay with it.
Yep. I, I just don't know.
See, I don't think that's what they got.
I think at the same time, when we look at that, we need to look at, and again, I don't remember it, but it, here it says that the doors should have, the, doorway should have doors on them, or that was one of the criteria, and currently they don't. We should look into that. But that, that's one thing that, to me, is a must that we have to have doors on there.
Did the CUP say that? I, I thought.
That's just what one of the residents is saying. I don't remember it. Even, even moving forward, I think we should require that there are doors on there.
Can I ask a question in the same vein? Um, so I can't find exactly where it said in the response that you sent back. I'm talking about the doors and code and fire-related things. Gary, have you been out to the site? Cause you are a fire marshal. Have you been out there to look at that? If we did put doors on or what they would need to do to be compliant?
Councilman Henderson, members of council, um, so we were just out there, Kevin was just out there. I will say, I'll just bring this up now. We do have an issue out there with no sprinkler system within that structure at the moment. That was missed by Metro West when they did for that portion of the, of the structure where we're utilizing yard waste at this time. So we're trying to, we need to work with curbside to figure out a resolution to that here in the near future.
So irregardless of what they are collecting, there still are code things that need to be addressed?
Yes, there is. The way it was described to myself and Zach from Metro West, it was a misrepresentation from the architect. I don't know if Zach understands that any better than I do. I don't necessarily understand what they exactly meant, but it's, I guess basically what they, they misrepresented, I guess maybe what they're gonna use the structure for in some capacity. That's the way I understood it, but I don't know. And this just recently came up in the last couple of days.
Do the doors have anything to do with the requirement for sprinklers or no sprinklers? Does it seem to be implied? I don't remember if that was a planning commission meeting. That they weren't required because there were no doors and that kind of threw me, but...
Yeah, councilman shot, I mean, from the door perspective, ideally to capture obviously the water in the area for sprinklers, I would prefer that there are doors on there. There should be doors on there. But yeah, we're, we're trying to work with Metro West right now. And again, we have not had a chance to speak with curbside in regards to this, so I apologize for the surprise, but we need to bring it, come out there and take a look at that and try to come resolution to that.
So is there some ambiguity in the code as to whether if there are no doors, are sprinklers required?
Well, there would be because from a, unless they had a completely dry system, which isn't gonna work in, in, in that facility based on the construction waste and yard waste that they're looking at. Of course, we're doing yard waste today, but we would need the doors, obviously, so the system wouldn't freeze ultimately.
Yeah, irregardless of doors or no doors, essentially it has an S1 occupancy because of the combustible commodities that are within it. Yard waste is technically combustible because it does heat up as it sits there and then generates heat, so. Just based on that alone, whether it has doors or no doors, it needs to have that.
Okay. So can we assume then that implies it needs a sprinkler system?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you aware of that?
Yeah, if I may, council, mayor, council members to respond, we did meet with the fire department, I think about a month or two ago, in, in looking through the city and, and more recently, looking through the, the building. And at that time, we understood, and I think in, in my concept plan summary, we, we said that as we move forward, it's a sprinkler system, a wet system, dry system is likely to be required. I think we had, we had offered a month or so ago to work with the fire department, figure out what that needs to look like depending on where we get. I had not heard the interpretation that something was missed in the meantime, but again, our expectation was, and there's a, there's a large water main in the south northeast corner of it, of the building that was clearly designed to be the start of that. So that was something that we've anticipated. Again, I think I, I put it in the write-up. That was a path that we were anticipating going down. And we have gotten quotes for non-water-based systems that are commonly used in the, in, in the waste and recycling space that are more targeted, not deluge systems. They're, they're different types of systems. So we would, we would explore those as well. And, and councilmember Henderson, to answer your question more directly, where we talked about the need for additional doors. Had the building, had all six openings right now had doors on them, we, the building would lack appropriate fire exits.
Yes.
So that's, that's the condition that through the walkthrough, we also addressed with, with, with the fire department. And this gets back maybe, councilmember Sonic, to the, to the earlier question of was it designed with doors? I don't believe so. I didn't see a final design that said this building will have doors. So I have, I have not seen that. Again, I can't speak to all the different discussions, but I will, just for context, add that most transfer stations for yard waste specifically across the state are likely completely outdoors. They're, they're the back 40. They're, they're just...
I generally remember that too, in that, in the discussion, but.
Yeah. So I mean, so, so when we look at a transfer station without doors and look at yard waste, I think it's just important to understand the concept that in, in other communities, the yard waste transfer station is literally just a 10-acre pile, but it's 100 yards high and wide. So I mean, we're, we're designed significantly more robust than that with or without doors. But certainly, we understand next steps in compliance, and, and that's part of why we're here to have that discussion.
So just for my own, I have to verbally process it. If this CP does not move forward, you would still be looking into putting fire suppression, whatever Gary deems that you need to be compliant, right? So like, whatever he says to make code, you're still going to do that no matter what?
Yeah, yes. Mayor, council, code is code, and, and we're, and we're here to, to be a community member and a partner and, you know, do what, what, what needs to be done to get where we need to be.
Thank you.
And I don't think today, we're not talking about amending the CUP. This is a concept plan. We're giving feedback. And I think probably everybody, if they haven't already, said it has some level of discomfort with the, the lack of compliance with the existing CUP. The building, you know, opened with a different set of services than what was, what was approved. And I understand that you weren't around when it was approved, but it seems like that, I don't know, those requirements aren't 15 years old. They were, this was just when the building was designed. And so that, that concerns me that, you know, if we add new requirements, are those, are any of those gonna be followed either? And so that's my level of discomfort. You're looking to spend a significant amount of money on the EAW, and I, I'm guessing you're here because you want some assurance that we would ultimately approve additional business lines before you spend that money.
Councilmember, mayor, council, all, all we really want today is for you to understand the process that we're looking at, to get your feedback, and for us to do an assessment of whether it feels like there's objections and we can build systems around them to, to meet the, whatever those concerns might be. I, we're not looking for any, any promise to pursue anything or to approve anything in the future. We honestly want the feedback. We want to continue the partnership. And to me, a next step after tonight is, it was talked about at commission, and we've talked about it with neighbors, is I'd like to organize a tour for elected officials and city staff, and let's go see a couple of other neighboring transfer stations and look at what they do and look at what they look like. And I, I think my goal tonight isn't to, to get you to say, yes, I love it, or no, I hate it. It's just to really hopefully let you know that we're, we're serious about the partnership around this and want to spend time in the next weeks and months educating folks and working with folks on looking at what this can be, and certainly working to continue to be as good a neighbor as we can and find ways to make compliance more clear.
For me, it's, uh, whatever we can do to make the business succeed and expand, and I mean, that's part of business is you want to grow. I get it. Uh, one, one area for me that's going to be a big deal, and it's not aimed at the transfer station or anything. Garbage, garbage trucks are notorious for the trash just flying out of there constantly. An ether load is probably along the highway before it gets back to wherever it's going. And with the recycle stuff, a lot of that small plastic blows all over the place also. I didn't look. I mean, in the picture, there's some of their, there is some fence around some of it, but is the entire building fenced?
The entire property is fenced, yes.
So that'll help anything blowing around or, you know, help mitigate it. The other thing that I would probably be strongly all for would be some kind of a deal where maybe once or twice a year, you go around and clean up the trash about 500 feet from the property, outside the property line or something, because no matter how high the fence is, you're gonna miss some, some, or some's gonna get blown around. And you're not liable for all the trash out there. I mean, it's everybody throwing it out the window too. I get it, but that would help.
It should literally be an issue. We would commit to that on a weekly basis. We have a, we have members of our team that do the fence line now for random things that blew in from other sites and that. Again, we would, we would have a litter prevention and mitigation plan, as I've talked with the neighbors.
Okay.
So it's something that we're, we're, we're very open to, again, building the processes around making sure that it's not a nuisance. And being at the early stage that we're at in this process, we have a lot of time to build exactly what those requirements would look like. And certainly, the, through the environmental assessment worksheet and permitting process, the state of Minnesota will assess and provide requirements and restrictions several different levels as well.
And I personally wouldn't be for the organics at all. I mean, to me, the organics are more different than, than Muskrat land or the, possibly land on Zaltim in here. Day like today, it gets ripe in a hurry.
May I address organics quickly, the question that was asked earlier? So organics collection, or organics meaning essentially residential food waste, is happening across Hennepin County. It's been required to happen. Currently, the vast majority of that residential food waste ends up at the Brooklyn Park Transfer Station. And from the Brooklyn Park Transfer Station, Hennepin County gets it to one of the two permitted facilities in the metro, either the Shakopee, Mindoakka, and Sioux, or SET Empire Township compost facility. So one of those two facilities manages the vast majority of it right now. A lot of the flexibility that we're seeking in our operation is that we don't know what's gonna happen in one, two, five, and 10 years. And with the prospect of Herc shutting down and Brooklyn Park going away because there's no longer Herc, we rely on a lot of different people to move our material for our customers so we can get it to the environmentally responsible spot where it needs to be. And if we're gonna continue to recycle, to recycle yard waste, to recycle food waste, ultimately, we need to have the flexibility to get that material environmentally and financially efficiently to where it needs to go. We cannot drive a collection truck that gets three miles a gallon to Shakopee from Dayton because it has organics or food waste on it. We can get that transferred, for in the, in the case of yard waste, get that aggregated transferred and hauled. Food waste is a significantly smaller volume of material than yard waste. So I read, I put a little bit of the, in the concept plan summary that if we were handling food waste and transferring, I think it would be on a very small scale. It would more likely be a truck into an eight-yard, and then that eight-yard would go into a front-load truck that's taking off to go service restaurants and hospitals. So I don't, I, I don't ever envision where you would have so much food waste that you're filling up a trailer.
You have like one, one truck out of the 40 or something?
Yeah, right.
For organics.
And we have front-load routes that go out and service restaurants and, and the like, and that's more likely what organics would look like. It's very small.
So what happens to, so we reached, Dayton has reached a point where we're gonna start having to do something mandated with organics? What do you foresee that being? Does that mean somebody, you have another cart or?
So Hennepin County Ordinance 13 will require Dayton, once you, once you've exceeded a population of 10,000, you'll have, and, and they're gonna move the benchmark of 10,000 to 5,000 sometime between now and 2030. You'll essentially have two compliance options. You'll either need to contract with a hauler to collect organics for every resident, or amend your hauling ordinance to, to require everybody who collects trash to also collect organics and charge the customers for that service. So nearby and adjacent to you, you have different options that have been selected. Maple Grove has a, they initially amended their license. Everybody who hauled trash had to haul organics. It hit everybody's bill. There was kind of an outrage. And then Maple Grove came in and picked a single hauler for a contract. Rogers has explored the similar options, and Rogers now has a license ordinance requirement where if you collect trash in the city of Rogers, you also have to offer and charge residents for curbside organics collection. So it's on everybody's bill, just like traditional recycling is, and they don't have the option to not pay for it. They have the option to not participate, but Minnesota state law prevents the licensing authority, requires the licensing authority to prevent the hauler from not charging residents for that service. So as you approach that 10,000 threshold or the threshold comes down to five, you would likely make one of those two choices. Across the metro right now, cart-based collection has been the most commonly chosen strategy, certainly across, yeah, 35-gallon cart is most common, and that's another, another truck. We commonly use smaller trucks, which are, you call it an F-350 with a small collection on the back to do organics because they do get a little more miles, and again, they're not carrying as large a capacity of material.
So Rogers has their current haulers, garbage haulers also, and Maple Grove tried that, and they got blowbacks, and I went to a single.
They went to a single hauler.
And that single, does that mean every two weeks it's picked up? Or every, I can't imagine food waste sitting there for two weeks.
No, Hennepin County Ordinance does require, require weekly collection. There's some other communities across the metro that have dabbled with every other week, which is probably more attuned to winter months, shoulder months. But Hennepin, Hennepin's ordinance does require weekly collection.
So this is part of the chapter 13 that I've sent out to you guys and then the updates. And we do, we have been working on the ordinance amendment where it would require all haulers then to come here and get licensed, because that's one of the stipulations then, and we, then we would obviously require the organics as well. To not charge all the residents, the workaround right now is that we offer the drop-off facility. That's offered through Republic because they hold our recycling contract. But we are an open market for garbage, so I, it's my understanding that we're not able to pick a single hauler unless we go through the consortium process.
So it's distributed independently than recycling?
Correct.
Lovely.
So right now, residents can choose any garbage hauler that they would like. The city does not dictate that, nor do we use the taxes to pay for it. It's just on residents themselves to choose where it's different than recycling is. So yeah, some, some of the stuff coming down from the state to the county is gonna affect us financially and significantly for some decision-making.
Yeah. So what are the types of waste that you're looking to expand to besides organics?
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, we, we've asked for consideration for trash, MSW, or garbage, which are all the same thing by different names, construction demolition debris, recycling, meaning bottles and cans, paper, mixed residential recycling, and also residential organics or food waste. Our facility, as you've seen pictures of it and staff has walked around it, is not large, and it's, it's not large enough to have a full operation with all of those materials. It's, it's much more likely that we would end up having, you know, a, a trash operation, a seasonal yard waste operation in those eight months, and then maybe we, we focus more on CND when we don't have yard waste on the floor, or we have a, a small amount of, of, of CND. Recycling, as we've talked with the fire department, recycling, we feel is the biggest source of, of fire risk, just with the misconception about lithium ion batteries and embedded battery items in their disposal. So that's one that when we look at it, we would have probably double and triple protection from a fire standpoint. Or maybe that's one that we don't do right away. We currently have pretty ready access to, say, the art recycling. pretty ready access to, say, the art recycling systems of many of our partners. Again, that can change. And if we wake up in two months and we don't have a place to go, we would need to adapt. And again, it's that flexibility that we're looking at. But I want to stress enough that as big as the facility looks in the pictures, it is, it is not, it is not big. It is not set up as a gigantic, you know, put 50 trucks in there and close the doors and let it sit for a day. It's a much smaller facility. The design of the facility is really based on throughput. We dump a truck or two, we get them in the trailer. And really, our primary strategy in defense of odor, litter, and all nuisances is we move the material. And we don't have the space to do storage. So through the operational procedures, we're getting the material on the floor, up and in a trailer. When the trailer's full, it's tarped. And in the next morning, it's on its way. And it's out of the facility. So I think that we have managed successfully through, I know it's only been a few months, we've managed through the stinky yard waste season. Wet July grass, when it's hot, is one of the smelliest substances on the planet. And we've managed it, I think, very successfully with good planning, good housekeeping, and good procedures, and haven't had complaints related to it. So I'm confident that we can put those things in place and continue to do that. Planning Commission, we heard more about, you know, just concern about garbage, garbage juice, so to speak, on the floor. And ultimately, that concrete ends up smelling. We're investigating, and we'll ultimately find a wet-based scrubber that we could use to scrub the floor periodically, if that's, you know, a weekly as needed. Not likely to want to do it in February and turn the tipping floor into a skating rink.
What drives that? Is that the organics, or is that also the yard waste?
The odor.
The seepage into the concrete.
You know, to me, that was more of a forward-looking, anticipated thought from, from planning commissioners as it related to handling trash. I don't think we have an issue now with yard waste. We scrape and clean, and we have a bobcat with a brush on it if needed. But we manage that floor right now very, very well. Our, my inclination to shop for and ultimately commit to purchase a scrubber is to address that concern from residents, that if that's, if that's the thing we think we just can't solve for, I think we can solve for it. So that's an example of how we want to be open and listen and understand what the concerns are, and identify what steps we can take to mitigate them.
Anybody else have more questions?
Maybe just one, and I think I understand this, but it's regardless of which waste stream we're talking about, you're talking about this as simply a transfer facility. You bring it in, you dump it out of one truck, you scoop it up and put it in another truck.
Correct.
And so same with the recycling, you wouldn't be doing any sorting of the single sort or-
Correct.
Anything of that nature, just go from one vehicle to another to be more efficient? I'm not quite sure I understand the, the organics piece, if you're going to do all that and then just drive to Brooklyn Park. But it, I'm not in your business, so I'm not going to pretend to know what's profitable and what's, and what's not. That way, is that more in anticipation that that facility would go away?
Yes. Mayor Council, I think a lot of what we're talking about is having the ability to manage an unknown future. So I wouldn't anticipate bringing organics in tomorrow just to drive it to Brooklyn Park. We would let it, we would let it get there the way it's working right now. In the future, if that condition changes, we could look at how to, how to adjust. Again, it would be a smaller-scale operation, most likely, small truck into an eight-yard container into front-end load truck that's then going to service hospitals and schools, et cetera. And then it makes its way on that route to its final facility.
Sure. Any more questions?
Matt, when you say trash, you're just talking about whatever's in that green garbage can goes through your facility?
Correct. Yes, sir.
I don't know if I want to be there.
It's different than the organics, but.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, what we're looking for in concept plan is a general individual, if you have support, or I'm going to say strong support or strong opposition. If there's strong opposition, and there's really, it would save the applicant money through, of not going through the EAW process.
Makes sense.
Some of the stuff I have no problem with, but I, the stuff that causes problems, my understanding is the organics is, and it sounds like it's only going to end up being 3% of your stuff in the end. So I'd be inclined to hold off on that. But that's, that's my thoughts.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like the need either. It's the flexibility going forward that you're looking for. And maybe that's, that one is better dealt with separately. I guess my, I don't honestly have a problem with, you know, the, this being a transfer facility and, and you wanting to do, well, you're already doing several of the things that you're asking for. So that's, that's my discomfort, is that we should have been having this conversation sooner, or you should have been waiting to offer some of those services until you had it in a CUP. You know, overall, I don't, I don't have a problem with what kind of waste it is. It's moving, and we're going to expect you going forward to, to honor that CUP. I think that when it's ultimately rewritten, it's going to have to have some teeth in it that we don't have today. So I would, I would like to see that relationship get better between the city and you, and also the city and your neighbor, or yourselves and the neighbors. And I don't mean you personally, I mean the company. But we've got other opportunities to weigh in on this thing as the EAW moves forward. I'm not quite sure how it, how it lands with somebody else being the local government unit in the, at the end of the day. But we do have control over the CUP. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't discourage, for myself, I wouldn't discourage you from moving ahead with that process, that I think we're going to, going to refine, refine language as we go along.
Is it my turn? I mean this with the most respect, Mr. Herman. But for me, I would like to see everything up to code before we move forward with anything else. It feels kind of like a snowball. And I do actually remember this from 2022. It was a highly debated topic in my house, because my husband actually sat in the seat before me. And he voted no because of that concern about, oh, it's just yard waste. And then it turns into, oh, it's just a little bit of trash. Oh, it's just this. And it's, and I respect the hustle. I understand that garbage has got to go somewhere. I'm very familiar with Herc. I work in the energy industry. So like, I understand that there has its purpose and its place, and someone needs to collect it. And it's got to be housed, transferred somewhere. And this is maybe one of those not in my backyard kind of things. And I'm sorry for saying that, because I understand it's tough to find a spot to be able to transfer this stuff. Because again, nobody wants it in their backyard. But I'm not in favor of trash. I could possibly be convinced if there was some benefit to our citizens as far as the organics go, considering we're going to have to collect them anyway. I don't have an issue with the recycling. I'm sure that our fire department will do a great job working with you on what all of that means, and making sure everybody's safe, that your people are safe and our people are safe. But I guess that was the large ramble to say up to code. We got to talk more about the CUP and the language. I agree with you, David, with that. But I don't have much of an appetite for the actual municipal trash. Thank you for letting me speak my piece.
Thank you. Anybody else for the applicant?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can open this up. Who wants, come on up. Name and address and.
Yes, my name is Batha Jacques. I live at 11950 West French Lake Road, directly across from MTL. When you're saying not in your backyard, it's in mine. I do have questions for the council. How will the company be monitored to ensure the requirements of the Minnesota ambient air quality standards are being consistently met? And it is my understanding that the facility currently is collecting yard waste from about 11, eight to 11 trucks per day. This is only about 25% of the capacity of the facility. So when we're being told that the odor, the pests and vermin runoff, all of that is manageable, how is that going to be manageable as the volume grows? In addition, for the potential for rats, raccoons, flies, I also have a concern with seagulls. We did drive by the Maple Grove facility earlier, and there were a significant number of seagulls flying around the facility. We did stop outside the gate of the transfer station, which is about twice as far away as our house is away from the curbside waste. And there was a significant odor for the facility. Now, I will say that the trash was piled all the way up. Again, I do have concerns that trash is not being removed from the facility on a daily basis at the end of the day. So my question really is, what is our course of action for if MTL or curbside wastes control measures don't meet muster? Because that is our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Fred Heim. I have a 11731 West French Lake Road, just a little bit south of curbside. Three points, mostly small points, but one is, of course, the added traffic as it ramps up. You know, it's already dangerous to walk across the street to get my mail. And it's just something you really have to, you know, look both ways a couple of times before you go venture out into the road. So we know what's going to happen there. Number two, regarding the sprinkler system, if there's sprinklers, they're going to have to have a way of dealing with the water runoff. Sprinkler system in a building that size generates a lot of water if it's tripped. And, you know, we're literally feet from French Lake, and we have to make sure that none of that runoff ever gets to French Lake. We all have our wells right within a couple of hundred feet of curbside. And, you know, once our water is ruined, we'll never get it back. And the third one, which is probably a tiny one, every time the truck goes by and picks up the garbage, there's splatters of fresh hydraulic oil on the road. And it seems they should have a maintenance system where they keep at least those hydraulic fittings from leaking. Hydraulics is beautiful, but it has to be maintained so that it doesn't constantly drip oil onto the blacktop, because that'll tear up, that'll ruin a blacktop road. And really, those are, those are my three concerns.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
And then just to note, if we, if and when we bring that ordinance amendment forward, where garland bridge haulers would have to be permitted with the city, it is required for them to list each truck, and there are certain inspections that they have to be done. I believe hydraulics is one of those.
Marsha Grover, 1132 from Brookline. First of all, I want to mention the Maple Grove organics place over by Target. If the wind is right, we can smell it at our house, and we're about a mile away. So granted, that's a bigger facility, and we're farther away. But this is a smaller facility, and those people are right across the street, right across the street. And again, they have wells, they have septic systems. You know how I feel about that. But mostly, I'm just kind of aghast that they don't have any fire suppression system in this building. Thank you, Stephanie, for saying that. Because I'm wondering now how many of those other commercial and industrial buildings don't have it either? And if there's some way that you can follow up and check and see if these buildings are up to code? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Keith Grover, 113th and Fernbrook. I wasn't involved in the discussions with putting this facility there in the first place. And shame on me for not paying more attention to what was going on at the time in our neighborhood. But some of the things really bother me here. We gave them a conditional use permit to operate. They've only been in operation for three months. The conditional use permit said no overnight storage, right? That's what it said. And I'm sure that's what the residents in the neighborhood were told at the time, too. Why would they be told something else? Because that's what was at the CUP. They all thought there were going to be doors on this facility. Here we are, it's up and in operation. There's no doors on it to keep any smells from blowing out of the building, or to keep any debris from blowing out of the building. The fire suppression thing is kind of a concern to me, too, and as it is for the chief, and it should well be for you. I mean, how does that slip by? I mean, who on the city side watches to make sure that a building that's being built, that's supposed to have fire suppression, actually gets that put in? This Metro West, I keep hearing that name coming up multiple times, the inspection guys that come out and inspect. I mean, I don't follow them around. I'm, and I'm not a building inspector, although I've been trained in safety inspections for buildings and did that for 30 years. But I don't understand how they miss that. I really don't. I mean, that should be one of the first things you look at. Fire suppression, electrical supply, plumbing and heating. I mean, what else are they going to look at? I mean, the structural stuff is all done by structural engineers. All they're going to have to do is read the blueprints for that stuff. And if this stuff was all on the plans originally, I don't know how in the heck we missed that. My personal experience with them is that they just get their check and they leave. I mean, I built a barn, right? A decade ago, or more, 12 years, I forget, long time ago. And I know what their inspections were in coming to the site to look at. They didn't spend five minutes in the two inspections that they, that they were at. One of them, the guys that were building, the company that was building, told me the electrical, or that the electric, that the inspector was going to be there. I live over the hill. I get in a car and I drive over, and he says, well, you missed them, they're already gone. He said, what could they possibly have looked at? You just told me that they were, they were, they just got here. He told me when they walked in, they looked at the building, he didn't spend 30 seconds in the building to pay any attention to the structure. He didn't have any drawings with him to know what the structure was supposed to look like. And they just did their rubber stamp of approval, and they left. And I'm thinking that's probably what happened here, too. And that really bothers me. So, I mean, if there's some way that we can, you know, put a microscope to what those guys are doing, to make sure that they're doing what we want them to do, I think we really need to move forward there. The other issue that, that kind of came up, and basically, my question, it's not something that's forthcoming from the, from the applicant, is other people, other companies will be able to dump their products here. I mean, it's a transfer station, right? And that's happening now to some degree. I've seen other companies' trucks going in there. I'm assuming they're dumping grass clippings, because that's the only thing they're permitted to get right now, lawn, lawn stuff. But it's not just their vehicles that are going in and out of there. If they have a vehicle, or if they have a building that you give them X, Y, Z permission to use, they're in business to make money. They're going to run that thing right to the max. And I don't blame them at all. I mean, if I was them, I would do that. The question is, do we want to give them that blanket permission to do all that? I mean, to me, garbage is absolutely out of the question for that area. You have this whole facility that got put into a small rural housing project built along beautiful property, French Lake. I mean, their backyards must look great. Now they have this in their front yard. I don't think anybody envisioned at the time, at least I don't think they were told at the time, what to look forward to in the future. And what's being put on the table here- And what's being put on the table here today and what was put in front of the planning commission, I don't think these folks had any clue two, three years ago when that was discussed, that that was going to be on the table. Maybe some folks had some forethought and read between the lines, but apparently not enough of us did that. You have these eight homes that are very close to this facility. All eight of those homes, I remember when they were built. What we also haven't talked about is we have the mobile home court that sits just to the west of this facility. There are 250 probably families that live in that facility. One time it was over 300. I think they're probably down to, I mean, 200, 250 now, but those folks are close to that facility also. I think the whole thing in the first place got put in the wrong place. It's right at the edge of the industrial park, right next to a housing project along a beautiful rural lake. And now we're talking about adding tons of other products into the mix. The recycling part, maybe, from a smell standpoint, that's not going to smell, right? Paper, plastic bottles, there's no smell to that, not when you're talking about yard waste or talking about garbage, just no comparison at all. When you're talking about industrial waste, how do you know what's coming in on that industrial waste truck? How do you know that that facility, that that building got ripped apart, didn't have asbestos in it? Who monitors that kind of stuff? That really bothers me, especially sitting next to these homes. The prevailing winds from these, from this facility are going to blow right towards these folks. They live south, southwest, or southeast and east from this facility. Ninety percent of the time, the wind is blowing right at them from this facility. I think we really need to take a long, hard look about what we do to these folks that are living in that area and protect them as best we can. Thank you.
Question there. Marty, when a building is demoed, somebody knows if there's asbestos in it or not, correct? So, I mean, yeah.
Generally, you have an abatement before you demo a building.
Anybody else want to come forward? An applicant want to come forward and address some of these questions?
I think just in addressing some of the concerns that we've heard from residents, that we've had conversations with individual residents, we'll continue to have those and continue to work on any and every issue that we can. I think traffic is a very important issue for some of the residents I've talked to, some that aren't here tonight. I want to address that just a little bit, and planning commissioner Grover on the traffic related issue and what color trucks and whose trucks. So we currently have eight to 11 yard waste trucks. Orange trucks that go out in the world, collect yard waste and come back. We have 20-ish, 25-ish garbage trucks that go out in the world every day, yellow and white trucks, orange rather, and white trucks. And then they may dump, they'll dump along the way and then they'll come back. So if we look at the addition of trash as an acceptable material, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's a whole bunch more trucks. The trucks that are entering and exiting the facility, that go to bed there every day and wake up there morning, are still coming in, they're potentially just not dumping on their way in, or dumping first thing in the morning, they're dumping at that site. So I think that's, that's an important thing to keep in mind. If we had to, if we were limited to yard waste and we decided, as Commissioner Grover had mentioned, to fill up the capacity, that would be 30-ish other trucks from other companies with yard waste on them. That was the example that we wrote in the concept plan summary, just for reference. The capacity of the facility is really the building size in and of itself, and our ability to get material through it, and that doesn't change by having different material types. We can't all of a sudden dump more, load more, haul more. The building is what it is. So in some ways, we have this zero-sum game of are they going to all be orange yard waste trucks, or are they going to be different color other trucks? And again, as we're not proposing any expansion or size of the building, that kind of is what it is, and we move those things around, and we're certainly open to having those discussions. Again, our ask tonight was to get your feedback and to continue the conversation with residents, and I appreciate that. I very much look forward to having additional conversation, and hopefully staff and elected officials are receptive to going on a tour and looking at some other facilities and continuing to figure out what's the best path forward for us. So thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Matt, if you could, and you're experiencing this business much more than any of us are. This project is going to require a permit from the MPCA. What's involved with inspections from the MPCA?
Well, the MPCA would be probably an annual, semi-annual inspection during operation, you know, with permit conditions, and certainly there'll be reporting requirements and a pretty, I mean, a very detailed analysis of, you know, EAW sets the stage for the broader sort of environmental impact, the solid waste permit review process, which again is a separate many-month-long process with its own public comment and review period. That would focus solely on the, any conditions required to protect human health and the environment on the solid waste side. So, you know, a very rigorous set of steps that this would go through. We would be looking at, you know, getting requirements as it relates to odor and other things added by the MPCA. So certainly, I'd like to add them here and make sure we're addressing any and all concerns, but lots of layers in this step for concerns to be raised and addressed. And I want to go back to the doors, if I can. I have not seen the transfer station design drawing where that building had doors on it. So I, again, we've been very open with the city about, you know, where the seven to seven hours and how is, how is that facilitated in leaving things on material, material loaded at night? I don't believe that there is a door requirement. I know that there wasn't a fire requirement that we were aware of. So certainly, those are things that we look to, to continue to work through and address, but I just want to make sure they're not viewed as sort of flagrant noncompliance. Because there was a lot of things that I can't speak to during all the different iterations of the MTL site and this site, and what, we hear a lot about traffic and that originally the traffic was all supposed to use Troy. Well, I do believe at one point in the conversation, there was an alignment that had a light at Troy, and it was going to push all the traffic between our site, basically, to Troy and QuickTrip. That light didn't come in, and there might be others here who have more history than I do on that, but I believe the current transportation strategy that we're using kind of met that final design of flow and the traffic study and where traffic was supposed to go. So as we hear traffic concerns, we are open to working with residents on them, we've educated our drivers, we've had specific employee vehicles that were problematic for horses that we've made sure go a different way. So we are listening and we are responding, and we'll continue to do that. Some of our residents have advocated for a three-way stop at French Lake Road out in front of our site. That doesn't, we would support them if that's what the answer to traffic is along those roads. So there's certainly a lot of traffic on those roads that aren't orange and white collection trucks, and we're sympathetic to the neighbors, we continue to want to work with them on that, and I continue to want to build our relationship with the city and our neighbors, and happy to help in any way we can.
Do you want to get a three-way there, Jason?
We have not listed a sub. It wouldn't be warranted, traffic volumes, but could be considered if it was a safety concern.
One of the residents mentioned an ambient air quality standard, and that's one I'm not familiar with. Is that under the jurisdiction of the MPCA?
Yes, that would be one of the conditions. If there's ambient air quality requirements, part of the EAW will look at air impacts, and then again, if there's, if there's a potential environmental health impact from air, we would expect the MPCA to create permit requirements for that as they go through the solid waste permit process. So even though it's a solid waste permit, it happens routinely at landfills and other sites where they do have air quality control measures, and we would expect those to be brought in by the MPCA through the solid waste permit process if there was a requirement.
Thank you.
I have no questions, but I do have some comments. So I was not on council or planning commission when this was originally approved. I would have been with your husband and voting no. Not because I don't think it is appropriate for the city, it is the location. I definitely think there could have been locations in the city where this would have worked really well. Right next to residential and parkland is not it. We, you know, put that whole building moratorium so that we could look at that area just east of here for the very reason that that is where industrial bumps up against residential. And we acknowledge that where industrial bumps up against residential, we have to be extra careful about what that looks like. And the fact that apparently no one cared, and put this right next to, and it's not even, yes, there's current residential, but it's planned to be medium-density residential. So it's not like it was eventually all going to be industrial. No, it wasn't. It's planned to stay residential and then be parkland. And nothing says park like a bunch of, you know, garbage trucks, which are needed, not, like, they're necessary, they're a necessary part of everything, and I'm glad to have businesses in our city, and we need it for organics, like, but this location is just a terrible location for this. And so for that reason, I would be opposed to any expansion. I do want to talk briefly about, clearly the residents thought there were going to be doors. Clearly, you didn't think there were going to be doors. And I'm not going to get into your specific situation, but I had a very recent, completely different thing experience that Zach and I talked out. When I was on planning commission, my memory of what happened and what's said was one way, and reality is another way, and Zach and I talked it out. And it turned out like, in the conversation, things were said, but they never actually made it to paper. And so I think that happens actually a lot, that in conversation, people are like, "Oh, yeah, we'll consider doors, we'll consider doors, we'll consider doors." And what never gets in paper is doors. And sometimes intentionally, and sometimes by accident, like, are up to $2 million. That was accidental, but had no one caught it, three years from now, Dean could come back and say, "Look, this says up to $2 million, not exactly $2 million," right? So it's not even necessarily an intentional miss. Sometimes it's just accidental, because as you said, you talk about it and you have, like, what, 7,000 meetings? So from one meeting to the next meeting to the next meeting, it can get lost. But it's pretty obvious that the residents that are nearby expected doors, and you did not. So somewhere there is that disconnect, and that, I think, does need to be addressed no matter what happens. That's to be a good neighbor. But as far as expansion, I guess I'm, I just don't think this is the right location for this facility. I really struggle with the fact that you are violating the CUP as written already, and I appreciate that you personally weren't the person to write that CUP, so, you know, aren't intentionally doing it, but it clearly says nothing overnight, and you got things overnight. And I think this is one of those disingenuous things. Technically, in the part of the CUP about the transfer station, it does not have hours listed, but it's everywhere else in the document. Everywhere else is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, but technically, in the transfer station part, it doesn't. And again, whether that was intentional or not, but if I had been a resident, I would have walked out of those conversations, assuming it was 7:00 to 7:00. Yeah.
We are absolutely not operating the transfer station.
Okay. Outside of those hours?
Yeah, that's, it's, there's very little activity at the transfer station. Again, it's, the trucks go out for the day, and then they come back. So the vast majority of the transfer station activity in the building is as those trucks return. Now, there's, there's two semi-trailers that were staged from the evening before, where a gentleman parks his Bronco, gets in a semi and leaves. So it's that haul, that, it's those two-stage trailers?
Yeah.
And we're surrounded by facilities with thousands of staged trailers. So right now, we have two-stage trailers in the morning that leave. That would be the transfer station activity, if that routine activity that's happening outside before 7:00 AM is that haul.
Okay.
So on the floor, working material, that's all, that's not done outside of that window.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that clarification. So, yeah, I, like I said, I'm not a huge fan of expansion, particularly since there've already been issues. I would maybe, I'm also, I got to go back, I'm a little frustrated, this there haven't been any complaints narrative, when they've only been open three months and you're not even close to capacity, right? Like, if you've been open for three years and at capacity, and there were no complaints, that's a very, that's like, oh, you're doing amazing, you know, an amazing, awesome job. You've been open for three months and are at, what, 25% capacity at this point?
I think that's a fair estimation.
Yeah.
Of the building size.
Yeah, what you could do. So to be like, "Oh, we've had zero problems." Well, I would hope not. If you had problems at this point, we'd have a much bigger thing going on. So that is a little disingenuous, and I would like to interrupt that narrative. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not super on board, but it sounds like I'm the only one not super on board, and you only need three, so I don't necessarily think you'd want to hold everything up for me. But those are my concerns, and I, like I said, I just, I hope, if nothing else, we learn from this and do a better job about looking when industrial bumps up against residential, and being really intentional and thoughtful about that, instead of just saying, "Yay, business, we want your taxes." Yes.
I'm not on board for the trash and all. I'm just not there.
Okay. So that's, that's where I'm at.
I definitely want to see doors and sprinklers.
Okay.
You know what? For some reason in my head, and you're right, you twist things over time, I was almost thinking this is a three-sided building.
Okay.
I was pretty sure it was open. I don't, I don't know, you know, if anybody else recollects that, but.
Can you just repeat everything you said? I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Talk closer to the mic and louder.
What I said. I think during the meeting, during the meetings, I was in the impression it was an open building. Because to me, it was surprised, I was surprised there'd be any roof, given that Maple Grove just makes a heap.
Yeah, it's in a pile.
Yeah. So I thought it was kind of cool that it would actually have a roof. So, you know, whether or not there are doors, obviously, I think doors would be great for the, for any transfer of air, the smells, but, and I don't have problems with some of this stuff. Recycling, I have no problem with. Construction waste, I don't think I have any problem with. Trash, I can see where that might be problematic, but it's really organics that spooked me for smells. So I don't know.
Mr. Herman, you offered a tour of your facility.
Yep.
I would love to come out and walk around with you.
Excellent.
To have you show me what you're doing, what you want to do.
I will leave a card with John for you, and you can reach out anytime.
Thank you.
It would be nice to.
It would be nice to just go out there and to see, because looking at these pictures, you're right, the building looks massive, but when you're actually standing there, like, what we, for me personally, the space, I am a verbal processor, I'm a toucher, I got to see it, so I would love to come out and take a tour and see what you have going on.
I'm there every day.
Well, all right, I'll give you a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any more comments?
Just a couple of quick questions.
Okay.
My name is Cathy Rosen. I live at 11731 West French Lake Road with Fred Heim. And this is in the future, okay, but, so this organic thing and the trash thing, and somehow it all goes through, and now we have this huge smell, and our wells are contaminated. What recourse are we going to have? Or are we just going to say, "Okay, it got voted in, and you're going to accept it"?
What is the recourse?
I mean, I'd like to know, how are they going to prevent the smell? You know, I moved out here five years ago, and it was beautiful. I mean, landscaped trees, and now we're four houses surrounded by warehouses. I never expected that. But that, you know, I've grown to live with that, but I don't think I can live with a smell day after day after day. I want to know what the recourses are going to be, what the recourses will be if the wells get contaminated, what the recourses are going to be if there's going to be so much traffic that we can't even take a walk along the road anymore? Because they did put in those sides for the bike trails and for people to walk on.
I can address the mayor, members of council, and then also resident, that I'm just going to let you know that the recourse for the smell is to let us know immediately so we can most certainly contact the company that will be.
But what are you going to do about it? How can you prevent it?
Well, we can prevent it based on the fact that the CUP has, that there has to be no odor outside of the facility. We'd work directly with the facility to make sure that that is corrected. If they're not going to follow that process, then we would find them and go through our administrative fine process. That's kind of our next recourse without having to go towards legal action against that company on your behalf. The wells contamination, I'm not sure what the next resource would be for us. We would look at that and see if we can test those wells, make sure and see what's in them and what you're seeing, and then see what we can do about those. We haven't had it happen yet, so I can't speak from experience.
Well, I don't know if it would or not.
But if it does happen, we will most certainly work with you to make sure we can. If it does happen, we will most certainly work with you to make sure we can provide whatever resource we can to help you out. And if it's the owner of your well, it's going to be a lot more wells than just your own. So likely we'll have a larger case than that. Hopefully it doesn't end up with like another heat loss or something like that.
Are you going to keep testing French Lake to make sure that we're not going to get pollution and all that kind of stuff in it? We've already got so much stuff going in there from all the other warehouses. And it's supposed to be, you know, purified and everything.
Should be purified and taken care of. I'm going to refer to Jason on that one, because I'm not a wetland person or anything related to engineering, so I'm going to pass it on off to Jason Quisburger, he probably has somebody on his team that he's able to resource with.
And right now, I'm specifically talking about the curbside waste runoff maybe from something.
Yeah, all of their stormwater is collected and goes through several layers of treatment prior to discharge to the lake. So that does manage all of the surface water.
Is anybody actually checking the lakes to make sure that it's as fresh as it always used to be?
Not on a routine basis, but we do.
Actually, that lake's cleaned up from what it was.
We do do studies on it. Yeah, it's periodic, it's not a, it's not a routine monitoring.
Like I said, I've only been out here five years now.
That'd be the Elm Creek watershed.
And I've never seen so many changes in one town in five years.
Diamond and grass used to be pretty loaded heavily with nitrates and. And, you know, what Zach was kind of alluding to is eventually we can pull the permit.
Yes.
We are.
I'm sorry, I'm having so much trouble hearing you. Can you talk into your mic?
We can pull the permit. So if we find that.
Shut down the business.
Yeah, so if they aren't following their CUP requirements, they aren't following their guidelines, they aren't doing what we need them to do based on their CUP or their approvals, we can pull their permit essentially and revoke it, which means they have to cease operations immediately.
Okay, for one question, so this smell comes.
Yep.
How hard are Fred and me, or Fred and I going to have to come and fight and saying, we want you to check this right now? I mean.
Not too hard. Just send an email or give us a call, we're happy to help with any way. Or stop up here and ask City Hall and say, hey, we've had some smell and it's been, if you have a routine time that you smell it, that's typically good. If it's when it's hot out or when it's cold or when you're seeing a west wind or east wind or something, we'll try to do our best to make sure they're all out there at that time. If it's affecting you, likely it's affecting more than just you too. So we want to make sure that all of our residents are taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Living the Difference, Cam. Well, Living the Difference.
Well, where I moved from, to get the city council to do, you know, and I'd go down, it would take weeks to get anything changed.
Anybody else?
I have one thing I forgot to.
Okay.
One of the concerns that, you know, that the neighboring folks had was obviously the traffic and the truck traffic. You know, and looking at, you know, the roads in and out of there, we rebuilt East French Lake Road from a little two-lane wide gravel road to a major road capable of hauling trucks, right? I mean, that's part of the whole process of doing that.
You're talking Western French.
Or East French Lake, no, West French Lake.
I know what you meant, but yeah.
You said east.
Did I? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Let me know where you're.
West side. Yeah, I'll just turn around this one. Anyway, you know, and that road going through there is a, you know, it's a wonderful road. The, the traffic leaving curbside waste has basically three directions to go. It goes out onto Troy Lane, it goes left or right, right? If you go west, it takes you out to 81 and it's not a controlled intersection. And I don't know that I'd want to be trying to get out into that traffic with a big truck from that intersection. There's no stoplight there. If you go over to West French Lake Road and you take it north, it brings you around to a controlled intersection that we built that's massive on County Road or the old 101. It brings you right out to the major highway that goes north-south on the west side of Dayton, Cottor Road 13, right?
Brockton, yeah.
Brockton.
Yeah, Brockton, Brockton Lane, yeah. Why our CUP wouldn't want them to have that in the stipulation? If they go that way, it goes and go in front of most of these folks' homes anyway. It still goes by one of them, I guess, but at least it's not traipsing up and down in front of all of them. And it's a major road that we built just for that traffic. Maybe that's something we should consider when you, because it looks like we're going to end up modifying the CUP, because they're not in compliance with it now, so just food for thought. Thanks.
Thanks. Anybody else?
My name is Darren Peterson. I'm not a resident, but I do have a business at 113th Avenue at the cul-de-sac. And I didn't expect to come and speak, otherwise I wouldn't be looking like I came from the beach.
It's a hot day.
But just a couple of things, like I said, my, my business is here. I don't know curbside. I have not had any interaction with them, but, you know, I'm thankful for being in this chair three years ago and getting my CUP. And I too have some work that I probably need to do in regards to making sure that I'm doing everything. But my, my life savings is in this business. And, you know, I want to treat the ground, the water that's at this property like it's, you know, somewhere that I live. And, you know, I'm just, again, I'm a completely different business. We do some recycling, but there was some discussion about fire suppression and I can tell you that my building wasn't brand new. It was something that I had to conform to fit my needs. And we went through some fire suppression challenges and worked with the fire department and very helpful. And, and again, I'm, I just had the perception when I was listening in that, you know, I'm very happy to be here and look forward to continuing to make this a home for my business. I spend more time here than I do at home. So I just wanted to show my appreciation and also just convey that I suspect that a lot of us small business owners are in the same boat. I, again, have not spoken to the gentleman, but, you know, we're happy to work with, with the city. And it took me a long time to find a location that was willing to work with us, so happy to be here.
Thank you. Everybody speak their piece apart.
I spoke my piece.
Yes, sir.
We've got what we need. If I can just remind the council, the next step with this is for the applicant to complete an EAW. That's about a 500-page document that goes into a whole lot of technical detail that's difficult to understand, but it will address traffic and odors and groundwater pollution and all different types of pollution.
Right, well, let's see if we can make up that hour. On to item L, EAW commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. EAW or EDA? The Economic Development Authority consists of seven members. Five of them are appointed by the council and plus two council members that serve as members. There's a vacancy when EDA Commissioner Juan Peralta resigned in May. At that point, we also discovered that Commissioner Jack Vernon's term had expired at the end of 2024. So we do have two vacancies. This position was posted on the city's website as well as advertised on social media. We had four applicants that applied for this, however, Luke Sins was appointed to the Park Commission at the last meeting, so he is asked to be removed from this. So essentially, we have three applicants for two openings.
Okay. How do we want to do this? We have two openings, three applicants. We could do something similar to what we did last time, except since there's two openings, maybe he's.
We need to know.
Give her two.
We need, sorry, mayor, members of council, we need to know which one you'd like to appoint to. So we have one current term that's going to end at the end of this year, and then one term that will end in five years from now. So it's not a similar situation to what you normally would see, is that we would just appoint two people and they'd be the same term. There is two technically separate transactions that need to happen. So I don't know if you want to do the first one or the second one or what your thoughts are.
So let's make the first one the short term.
That would be the end of this year then is the first individual.
That's Jack's spot, Luke is burying it at the end of this year.
Juan Peralta is the one.
Oh, Juan, okay, Juan, yeah.
And I think we should be clear, it's not necessarily that we like, we have to have one. It's not, so like, it's not, I don't want, it's not about preference.
Essentially, it's just the fact that one is only for sure till the end of the year and the one's for sure till five years. And then they can most certainly reapply and be reappointed.
And if, generally speaking, if, so this is actually a question that I had for when parks came up, but also from planning. When I was on Planning Commission, there, two of the people's positions were coming up and they were just asked if they wanted to stay on and they just said yes. And it never got posted. Is that routine?
They're posted.
Yeah, they're always posted no matter what.
Okay. So, and maybe just no one else applied, so it was just the two of them.
That is what happened, is that in that time, nobody else applied to the position. So then we had the two applicants that said that they would both be back.
Got it, and that's why I didn't go through anything, because we only had two people and they're only two spots. Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, well, I guess, does anybody want to start? If nobody wants to start, I can start.
Go for it.
Think I'd be okay putting Jack in the long term.
The five-year term.
The five-year one, just to refill his spot. So whoever would fill the one-year, or not even one year.
Be like six months or less.
I'm thinking that, so I, I kind of like John Weber from RDO, but maybe that gives him a taste of what he's in for. I don't know, that's, that's my thoughts.
I'll jump in. Having been on the EDA now a couple of years, I've enjoyed working with Jack and he is interested in continuing and I would support putting him back into the, his, you know, I guess essentially reappointing him to his position, which would be the five-year term. And I also, for the other spot, I guess I would, my preference would be John Weber for that one.
I had Jack for the five-year one and I didn't have a strong opinion between Matt and John. I think they both bring some really great qualities. I think they both do an excellent job. I, I just, I didn't feel super strongly one way or the other. And no matter what, they get to come back in January and try again. So regardless of who it is, they're going to have to come back very shortly. If they want to, or maybe in six months they peace out and then. I'm okay with Jack in the five-year and I have no strong opinion on the other one.
I like the shooting exercise, I'll be last.
I guess I will just echo that I also would like to put Jack back in his, I'll say his spot, because that skakes a claim to it, for the longer five-year term. And I, I don't have a strong preference between the other two, although I did, being a data nerd, I did like that John addressed that or at least, you know, stated in his application. And so I guess I would lean a little bit farther towards him.
Towards what?
Towards John Weber for.
But why?
Well, because he, I think it was just that the answers that he gave, I liked.
I thought you said something specific, but.
Yeah, no, I just like that he, you know, I don't know, again, this is just my own preference, but I, I liked the things that he said. I liked that he talked about being in a good position to add different perspectives. I liked his decision based on facts, data and multiple perspectives, being eager to learn. I know there's just some, maybe they're buzzwords or keywords in there that maybe draw me a little bit more towards him.
Okay.
But either one is fine with me.
Last to get shot.
I did get shot. Well, I shouldn't say that. I did get shot in the first guy. I mean, he came up so damn, he came up so fast.
Scott, that was the point. We all got shot.
Anyway, I got a second run anyhow, so. I'll go along with Jack, even though he gets extremely long-winded in some of the meetings. We can deal with it, learn to deal with it. And I also think that John is the right person, so.
Okay.
We'll give him a six-month trial.
So I guess I would make a motion that Jack goes to the long term, John goes to the short term.
I'll second it.
Okay, and any more discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item M.
Oh, and this is totally minor, but on page 102, there's a typo in the whereas Dayton doesn't have a Y. It's D-A-T-O-N on page 102, just FYI.
In Resolution 48 or 52?
The one we just talked about with the.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dayton.
Dayton.
Yeah, the second whereas. So. Totally irrelevant.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight you're asked to consider Resolution 52-2025, approval of a site plan review at 17400 113th Avenue North in the Dayton Industrial Park. So the applicant approached the city regarding building expansion at that location. The applicant and property owner is looking to expand the facility with a 780-foot office space expansion on an existing warehouse and storage building, kind of a maintenance shop, quasi-maintenance warehouse, multipurpose. The current property is two and a half acres and zoned I-1 light industrial and guided business park, which is consistent with the existing industrial use as the business park land use designation does allow for industrial uses. Principal use of the property is a contractor's operation. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there's two landscape companies that share the space with accessory outdoor storage. I'll just make the note that the outdoor storage has been legally non-conforming and is not proposed to be expanded in connection to the site plan review. And as it is considered legally non-conforming, not relevant to the current request for the office expansion. So I just wanted to make that note. The applicant is proposing paved and identified parking lot space on the site that has not have been delineated on the property in past. And then the longer-term plans that I've been talking with the property owner about, and I'll get into this, the city is somewhat involved with that as well, that the three accessory buildings on the north side of the property are proposed to be removed. Just running through the architectural design standards for the proposed facility, it is going to be a dry stack masonry exterior with it being that it is consistent with the I-1 standards for building requirements. I'll note as well that the applicant is proposing to add a four-foot tall skirt of the same masonry on the existing building, actually making an improvement to the existing facility on site. In the bold up here, I just wanted to note, the, this is the quote from the code section that triggers the need for this type of review. The final site plan and building plan shall be approved by the city council prior to issuance of any permits for new development or building construction slash expansion in any non-residential zoning district. I'll just note that typically, if you see a site plan review on the agenda, it is essentially, you're typically accompanied by a conditional use permit or preliminary plat. So this is a little bit of a unique situation as this is only the site plan review. Did not require a public hearing at the Planning Commission level. However, they are required by code to provide a recommendation. Now I'll get into just the note here. I think the majority of the city council is aware that city staff has been having discussions with the existing property owner on acquiring a portion of the eastern part of the property for future access and roadway that would become public street. And that would essentially connect to the north where the existing empty leg of the roundabout on Dayton Parkway is right now. So, and because it is still early in the process of this, the owner is expected to utilize the entire property, likely after the property purchase and plating is complete and would vacate the area at the time of the road, the road is constructed. So that'll probably just be dealt out through the preliminary plat phase and purchase agreement of the property. So that'll probably just be dealt out through the preliminary plat phase and purchase agreement of the property related to him continuing use of that. So when it comes to understanding, what does it take to find, what are the findings of fact to approve a site plan review? It comes into four sections of the code that I've included up here. The proposed development is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan, the proposed development is not in conflict with zoning district provisions, the proposed development is compatible with existing and anticipated future development, and it also conforms to the exterior building material requirements of the zoning code. Staff did draft a resolution for the Planning Commission to review and essentially unanimously recommended approval of the resolution with the conditions proposed by city staff. And those are up on your screen for the review and as well as in your packet. I'm happy to answer your questions and the property owner is also here.
Any questions for staff?
Just a comment, thank you for putting that code section in there explaining why. Because I know at the EDA meeting, I was a little confused why this wasn't just a building permit application, so I appreciate.
Sure.
That clarity. Just to follow on with that, so there is no preliminary plat or final plat or concept that goes with this, this is the approval here.
That is correct. We do anticipate, depending on the completion of a purchase agreement for the property, would be accompanied by a preliminary plat for the, what would be the outlot, that would be the roadway. And you would, it would anticipate that you'd see that in the near future. We probably go through that process well before there was a timeline for the construction of the road, just to have that taken care of. But, yeah, eventually you will see a preliminary plat for that property.
That's related to the road.
Exactly, yep. So this is already a plat of property within the Dayton Industrial Park. So there was no need or anything like that, or lot lines changing for this, with this site plan review.
Any questions for the applicant?
I just have two general comments, they're not really questions. One, I really like the, putting the brick along the existing building to tie them together, I think it's gonna look really nice and I think that was a good touch. Other one, which I know it's, you kinda mentioned the parking in the code. This is more like for resale, would it be worth having just one extra parking spot? Because it's easier to put in now than to come back later. If you're gonna sell it, would that make it a more usable space for someone in the future? But if it's not, I'm not gonna say no because of that, but that was the only question, that was really the only thing that popped for me was like, would one more parking space right now, when you're in the midst of it, just make it more usable maybe in the future? But overall, I have no issue or problem with this.
I think you bring up a good point, Councilmember Van Aston, just to note that if the parking does become an issue, because based on my review, it was compliant based on the square footage of the types of uses in the building, there is enough space to accommodate more parking on the site. That wouldn't affect the other portions of the site, so.
Yeah, that was it, that was the only thing that caught my eye at all, otherwise I think it looks really good.
All right, if there are no questions for staff, any more questions or the applicant, we could use the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
I was gonna make a motion right away, I thought you'd go through your speed.
Should've.
He was thinking bad.
Speed it up a little.
We were taking bets.
I'll take those. Okay, item N.
Should I speed this one up? Sarah's gonna have some comments.
I don't have any comments on this one.
Really? We can have comments.
I have no comments.
Go ahead, you don't have, we don't have to do a presentation if you don't.
Well, it depends if anybody's got anything.
We can have questions, but.
I'll make a motion.
All right, that would be Scott. Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, questions?
Where's the money coming from?
Yeah, so Mayor members of the council, this one, so since the previous Millin overlay project was paid for by state aid dollars that came from municipal state aid, this would come out of our pavement management fund dollars, so. That is why it is getting moved up one year, is because we are utilizing some other dollars to pay for the other project that was planned for the pavement management dollars for this year. We would just use next year's project this year and use the pavement management dollars.
Because it looked to me like there's, I mean, with what the South Diamond Lake Road project came in under.
Yep.
And then applying the balance of that money toward this one where we got about a 250K tilt there, so that's what we're, that's what we're.
So we wouldn't be able to use, so we wouldn't be able to utilize the municipal state aid dollars right now for the project because we have to get those pre-approved in order for us to actually utilize those dollars. So because we didn't bring this project into the project earlier, we can't use municipal state aid dollars to be able to utilize for this project in total. If we wanted to use those dollars, we could wait till next year to do it and most certainly can get that project approved. I'm pretty sure one of these two roads is municipal state aid is either one.
Only a small portion of East French.
We had already kind of banked on using municipal MSA next year.
For other projects possibly, yes. So we have that banked still, we could still ask for again another allotment in the future. But for now, this project would be utilized with pavement management dollars overall, so it's zero pavement management dollars have to go into the project for South Diamond Lake Road. And between the grant for safer routes to schools and then the MSA dollars for municipal state aid, we don't have any pavement management dollars going into that project at all. And then the street light, the other traffic light, which is looked to be paid for as well as the project is paid for by municipal state aid, again, along with a contribution from QuickTrip and Semstone. So we don't actually have any pavement management dollars of physical levy dollars and/or franchise fee dollars being expended this year without this project. Hopefully that made sense in a small little term.
Did the, pulling the 126th out, was that the, what, 200K difference or?
Yes.
That was essentially it, yeah.
Does that make sense to, so the reason we wanted to squeeze this in, because we believe pavement is cheap right now.
Yes.
Does it make sense to, because now that's gonna be a kind of a standalone project.
It could be one of two ways, yeah, it could be a standalone, we think it possibly could even be done as an invitational quote, which would make it a lot easier. Otherwise, we would probably combine it with a larger project. For example, in upcoming years in the northeast area, we have some Millin overlay that also includes some of the tumulus curb that is kind of the reason that was taken out of the project.
So the projects don't necessarily have to be continued as to save?
No, I mean, yeah, if they're adjacent to each other.
How bad are those roads?
In that neighborhood?
Yeah.
They're not great, there's some settlement in there, but they're certainly passable, I don't think they're inaccessible.
It's not gonna hurt them the way it could be.
No, no, I anticipate.
It is not one, whatever that road was, that was way up on the Camaraderie Road now that we.
Hundred fifty second.
Hundred fifty second, it is not that bad, so.
Okay, I have no other questions. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. That carries five to zero, and we're on to item O.
I have questions on this one.
That's what I thought.
Exterior lighting.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight you're asked to consider ordinance amendment 2025-17, approval of amending the zoning code for exterior lighting. In February, just a little bit of history, the City Council requested that staff look into a zoning ordinance amendment related to exterior lighting regulation within all districts within the city. The city has not historically had an exterior lighting ordinance and a lot of the times for new developments, the lighting standards are just established by way of the conditional use permit or preliminary plat conditions. Essentially, the, to further promote the city's designation as a dark sky community in the comprehensive plan, adopting this ordinance would essentially focus on two aspects of lighting within the city. One would be trespassing light onto adjacent properties, and that's broken down on another, within the ordinance on what the regulations are for that. And the second part would be to require that all lights within the city be downcast and not allow for uplighting unless there are specific circumstances that the Planning Commission included in that public hearing that they had earlier this month. Staff has conducted some research regarding the single-family residential properties as well as commercial and industrial. It is very common for every city to have commercial and industrial or civic and institutional requirements for lighting standards. And one that I found that was a little bit more rare was the specific standards for single-family residential, but there are communities out there that do regulate that to a certain aspect. So as I mentioned before, all lighting shall be downcast with a cutoff not to exceed 90 degrees to ensure light is not projected upward. Exceptions that were really common and I guess agreed upon by the Planning Commission was related to lighting, uplighting the American flag. And then the other caveat was the holiday lighting, as you think of the traditional holiday bulbs do not have shielding on there. So that one was kind of hard to incorporate into that, the regulation side of this. And then there are also limitations on the amount of light that's allowed to be trespassed onto adjacent properties. And that's measured in what is called a foot candle. And that's essentially a measurement that they use to understand how much light is actually being illuminated onto the property. But I just want to make the clarification that just because you can see a light does not mean that it is casting a shadow on you. If you're on the east side of French Lake, it is very likely that you would see industrial lights across the way, but that doesn't mean that they're trespassing onto the property that you are standing on. For a single-family residential and agriculture, the light at the property line should not exceed half point-five foot candles. And that's measured by a luminaire that can be utilized through the phone. As technology is kind of allowed for that. And John and I actually took a trip, it was on the way back from a meeting, to a light store and that was the recommendation by them, was that the lighting apps on your phones are sufficient enough to accurately regulate this type of thing. So it was good to get that confirmation before understanding how much a light meter was going to cost at a store like that. But consistent with other surrounding communities, the multifamily, commercial, industrial, civic and institutional uses, including parking lots, would have a limitation to not exceed one foot candle at the property line. Now, the caveat to that one is that if it is adjacent to single-family residential or ag, being that it be the zoning district, light at the property line shall not exceed point-one foot candles. And that's kind of following the understanding that because adjacent property is becoming commercial or industrial, there are concessions to potential nuisances that the city would have to make regarding traffic or noise and things of the like. So this provides the city the opportunity to ensure that at least one of those potential nuisance issues is addressed in this capacity. These are just some examples, right here, this is what's called a photometric and this is what is reviewed with new developments that are provided to understand where, these are essentially the foot candle readings at that exact spot. So we'd be able to verify that with the proposed lighting plan that they would provide with the building permit or potentially even at the preliminary plat stage, this is information that could be included in the packets if they do provide that. Although it's not necessarily required, we always highly encourage that they bring this forward to us early so we have the opportunity to review it. This is essentially the example of the cutoff angles that would be within the zoning ordinance itself for reference. And this was just pulled from the internet, I thought this was a good example to give people an understanding of what to expect. Now, we brought this to the Planning Commission for a public hearing in May and the Planning Commission had a couple of tweaks that they were looking for, we weren't far off from what they were expecting. But some specific things was they wanted more specific exemptions. Upcasting for architectural lighting was requested to be removed and then add the holiday lighting exemption for the shielding. However, the holiday lights are still not allowed to trespass onto adjacent properties beyond what is allowed by the code in the foot candle measurements. Stadium lighting is another one that was exempt from the height standards as stadium lights are typically 60 feet or taller. We do have stadium lights already in town and there is a, there's a chance that there could be more that could come with other park systems or anything like that, school systems. Street lights are required to be downcast. Wall lighting on single-family residential, this was kind of a larger discussion point about this at the Planning Commission. To be able to provide the property owners the opportunity to have decorative or architectural lighting to show off the design of their home to a certain extent, that was something that the Planning Commission didn't want to essentially regulate fully. So I brought back an amendment that basically said that if they want to have upcasted lighting, it has to be guided or blocked by an eve of the building to ensure that one, it's not upcasting beyond what the building eve is, but you still have some flexibility in lighting design that you want on your home. So that, the Planning Commission felt that that was a good middle. There was a lot of, there was a little bit of discussion on minimum standards and our architect on the Planning Commission did reference that the building code is going to require the minimum standards, so there was a reference that was added to that. Really, the only thing that was left outstanding from the Planning Commission's side of the discussion earlier in July was the low-level uplighting for landscaping. It did just get brought up, but ultimately the Planning Commission agreed to not allow this and just wanted to offer the opportunity if there was a preference, as obviously you're having the opportunity to look at all of the standards within this ordinance tonight. So I wanted to include that too as part of the discussion. These are some examples of the types of lighting that, on the building walls, that could be protected by eves and still be allowed. I don't know about this one, that was a part of this, is one picture. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
First off, thank you for this, this was one of the things that had come, that I was, that was important to me, so I'm glad that it made it to us. A couple of things, just some questions, the first and foremost, the American flag, uplighting the American flag was explicitly like allowed, but I didn't see that, am I missing where it is explicitly allowed at?
In the ordinance?
Yeah.
There is a section in there, up near the first page, that details out exemptions.
Okay.
I just can't remember what section it is.
Yeah, and I was just trying to reskim it and I didn't see it in my reskimming, but anyway, okay, so as long as, you know, it's there. So my first thing, second thing, in some of the dark sky literature, they have specifically called out the quality of lighting, as in blue, specifically, blue light is even worse, like all of it is terrible, quite frankly. There's a reason why we don't see fireflies anymore, because we're destroying our planet in every way, shape and form and this light pollution is one of them. But blue light in particular is even worse. So some of the cities have a limit on like how, like that it has to be, I think, 3,000 Kelvins? No, what's the K is the unit?
Kelvin.
Kelvins. I didn't see it in here, was that discussed at all or did we just decide that we didn't want to go that far down that path and just start here?
I would say that I did look into some of that stuff and they also do, so I looked through the dark sky community standards and there are like low light, or light zones that they would establish.
Okay.
Part of me drafting this ordinance was also related to understanding our capacity of enforcement.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so that was also part of it. And I think the mayor had mentioned at the Planning Commission a couple of times about avoiding this being like defense ordinance. But that, that was, it was something that was basically left out because of the concern about regulation.
Okay, which is fair, I was just curious, because like I said, I was looking through all that. The other thing is whether or not we want to define holiday displays and decorations a little bit more or not. I'm not saying we have to. So my question is, so my friend loves white Christmas lights, right? And so when she has the white Christmas lights on at Christmas, they are holiday decorations. But she is one of those people who leaves them on literally all year long. So in June, are those still holiday lights? Because it's June, are they like, are they Father's Day lights? Like, is there, do we want to have, you know, it's just, again, a question, I'm not saying I feel strongly one way or the other. There is language about seasonal lighting being, lighting that's used is temporary and used in connection with holidays and traditions. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to just clarify a little bit on the holiday lighting, that it is temporary and that it is used in connection with holidays and traditions, so that it is not, my friend, who, lover, but like. is not, my friend, who, lover, but like, come on now, turn them off. So, but again, in Christmas, they're holiday lights, but June, they're just annoying to her neighbors, so.
How do you define temporary, though? Like, temporary could be, I have those really annoying clips on my roof, so they're not actually like permanently affixed to my roof, which means they're temporary, right?
Well, like, how do you define that? So I, I don't know. I'm a big fan of holiday lights, and I wish I had mine up in June, but my husband won't allow that. But I don't know. I guess that's just my opinion. Like, what's the metrics of what is actually temporary and what is?
So if I was to put a hundred thousand lights on my evergreen trees going down the driveway?
I would love it.
White lights? That wouldn't be good?
I, I'm just.
I'd love it, too. Not white, I like colors.
For all of our poor planet and all of the birds and insects and everything else that we really need to stay here, and we are killing in every way, shape and form, and one of them is through light pollution, yes, I agree that they're pretty, but no, come on, people. At a certain point, turn it off. Well, yeah, I care about the things that eat the mosquitoes, and they're the ones we're destroying. The bats eat the mosquitoes, please stop messing with my bats. I would like them to stay here and eat all these damn mosquitoes. So, anyway, again, I'm not opposed, I just, when I saw holiday and there wasn't any definition on that, I wasn't sure if we wanted to define that a little bit to talk about they're temporary, decorative, and used specifically for a specific holiday or tradition and not just all year long. Because at that point, is that still a holiday light then? Because it's exempt, right? That's the whole point, is holiday lights are exempt, so.
Only from the shielding. They still can't trespass onto adjacent properties. And that was discussed at the planning commission meeting in May on whether they wanted to include the temporary or not.
Yeah.
They decided not to. There's going, the hard part about this is that there's going to have to be a little bit of flexibility with the holiday lightings, because I would caution the city from dictating what is a holiday and what can have lights on it.
Well, yes, exactly.
So that, that was kind of the.
I mean, because my friend could argue in June, they're Father's Day lights, and now they are Fourth of July lights. And really, August is the only month I could come up with some holiday to be like, no, it's this holiday, that's what this light is celebrating, so.
End of summer.
I mean.
Beginning of summer.
Then you get Labor Day, and then you, no, they're Halloween lights, no, they're my Thanksgiving lights, no, they're my Valentine's Day lights. So like, I, I get that, it was just something I wanted to see where everyone else's temperature was at. And yes, I'm a curmudgeon, and I hate fun. You can talk to my husband all day long about that.
And I don't disagree that that could pose a challenge. I mean, there are abusers of the code that we, that we deal with.
Of every code we have, so.
And, yeah.
Okay. So then, this other one is, what about if you have a situation where someone has a light that's technically not upcast, but is practically aimed into the neighbor's window? That's going to violate the foot candle, correct?
Yes, upon investigation, we'd be able to verify whether that it meets that or not.
Okay.
What we would do is, essentially, it would be, have to be scheduled at night, obviously, and just do an after-hours investigation and going to the property line and just going through the process of taking that reading. You'd be surprised at the foot candle readings that I've seen on some of these lights, that I have tested and personally feel that they are bright, but they do meet the intent of the code. So that's some, that's just more of an education side of things on, in terms of the residents that might not be familiar with what these, what these mean, so.
Okay.
Can you go to the slide of City Hall? You know, for example, so you can hear that this is, we have two different security lights in that building, and we're going to do a foot candle test. And the light on the right is very bright, but it's not in violation of the code.
But if I was your neighbor, I might be real annoyed if that was my bedroom window.
Correct, but it's still not, it's still compliant.
So that's somewhere that I get a little bit, I'm a little bit unclear, I guess. You showed both the ninety-degree cutoff and the sixty-six degree cutoff, and which would apply?
The ninety-degree is the minimum. I guess the maximum technically, if you're thinking about it by degrees.
Yeah, because to me, that's not, I mean, it is not shining it at the sky. However, it, it does look like, you know, that corner light on the, on the building there. And, you know, and I think that's what generates a lot of concerns, is that, well, it's not bright enough to light up your backyard, it's bright enough to bother your eyes when you, when you're looking at it. And why would we, you know, not have the sixty-six degree as the standard versus the ninety degree? And I don't know what situation that, that you need that light shining straight out, because it's just lost in my, in my view, if it's not directed at something.
I have a feeling, though, that if you buy lights, I think the sixty-six one's going to be hard to come by.
They're more and more, I mean, people are starting to realize that we are like polluting our, our skies, and we're getting rid of the things that kill all the bugs we hate. So it's actually quite easy to get lights that satisfy this, the sixty-six or further down.
Yeah, well, I guess that would be my opinion, that they should all be downcast to some extent versus just not upcast. But the other thing I wanted to ask about, because it's not clear and how, and maybe you said it already, but the low-level landscape lighting would be prohibited in this ordinance, and the planning commission discussed it, but recommended it be left out. Left out meaning we're not going to address it, or left out meaning it is going to be prohibited?
Left out meaning it is going to be prohibited.
And these are the stick-'em-in-the-ground little solar lights that you put by your sidewalk and so on.
Correct. Yep, this was, this was in the.
I read that backwards, too. See, you're saying those would be prohibited?
That was my understanding at the planning commission meeting, was that they were comfortable with leaving that out from the exemptions in the ordinance for.
Those are the upcasting ones, though. Not like the ones, yeah. So not, not the ones that you see, like, that would be, you know, why do we call it a, kind of like overcast and then just look down, like, not those ones. It's the ones that would be upcast towards a bush or something like that, or some sort of, a rock or someone that does it, some sort of feature.
The globe ones, though, would not be allowed, because they have like the little, their globes and the.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, because they're not downcast, they'd be technically upcast.
How much light is that?
Cannot push off of.
But that's what I'm saying, how much light can my tiny little globes, that little solar panel cardinal bird in my garden really put out?
See, it's not, if it was just you and you lived all by yourself, it wouldn't. It's the fact that every single house has these things, and they fuck with all of these little, like, all of the insects and the animals.
I live next to Father Christmas, and we got more lights going on over there than my tiny little globe.
This kind of stuff bothers me, because like, we are destroying our planet, and it's like something so easy and so simple that we could do, and people are just completely unwilling to do it. So of course, we can't tackle like the actual big things, we can't even agree to be like, hey, but people are unwilling to do it, so let's force them to do it. Like, I don't know, I just. I mean, we're not going to force any more than we force anything else. Why do we have speed limit signs, right?
The way this is written, it would seem to prohibit any landscape.
It kills.
Yes, except for any ones that would be downcast. If you have the one, I don't know if they call them the hot ones or whatever, you can kind of see them, and they're downcast.
But that isn't what it says, though. It just says.
It says any upcast.
Upcast.
It says upcast landscape lighting. It should.
Not in what I'm reading, I guess.
I didn't catch that one.
I would exclude landscape lighting.
You know, I, I don't, and everybody knows I hate going out for walks and having lights everywhere, especially when the government does it. But this is going to be just a nightmare to enforce. I, I mean, halfway during the planning commission meeting, I just kind of went, I didn't know where to go with this.
It probably took forty-five minutes, too.
These, these items that were included within the ordinance are certainly open for discussion, and if you'd like us to look at opportunities, whether you set a certain wattage for landscape lighting to be upcasted. I've seen that before. I've seen it with architectural lighting for industrial facilities. I believe that Greco has blue lights that are upcasted from the base of their building. And so those are, there are certain things that, that can be looked at. It's, it's all open for discussion, and I'm here to take notes and.
Well, for me, I would, I would leave the landscape lighting, the low-level landscape lighting out of the ordinance altogether. I think that's a can of worms that we're not going to be able to enforce, for one thing. And I think it's a tiny part of the problem.
It is a small part of the problem.
I want to clarify, when you say "out of," you mean that it's okay, it's an exemption that is allowed to have.
Just not even say it, just not talk about it.
Okay, heaven is an exemption as much.
I can do the triple reverse here.
Yes, I'm not trying, I'm just, I'm not trying to make it more confusing, I'm just making, when it says "out," we want to make sure that we know what it means. It means that we're not going to enforce that, yes.
And councilmember fashion, we could certainly establish a certain level of lumens or a certain level of wattage that would be allowed, so it's not causing a nuisance or cat, casting shadows or doing something like that. So I've seen that where there you establish a wattage. What that is right now, I don't know. I've seen a hundred watts before, I've seen two hundred watts.
Yeah, and it, I don't know, I, I would just leave it out.
Sure.
Period. I don't think watts helps in this case, because, you know, you can get a five-watt LED that's brighter than a sixty watt.
I was going to say watts become, it's become kind of a meaningless measurement.
So, I mean, the foot candles is really the, the actual measurement, and, you know, I, I don't think any of these would ever reach that point one threshold at the property line unless you've got them running along the property line and you're measuring right next to that. So I, for me, I'd just leave it out. I think it just, it would be just confusing, and we wouldn't be able to enforce it anyway.
I agree.
Any, is it a motion, or just a comment, or?
Well, it's not in here anyway, so.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve.
This as written?
This, with the exception of the low-level landscape lighting, would not be prohibited.
I'm sorry, do we need to call out that, I read through this again, and I believe Sarah is correct that.
I didn't see the American flag.
The American flag is not in there as.
Mayor members, council, currently, the American flag item is not within the ordinance. I know that was recommended by planning commission to leave it in there, so if you want to amend your motion to make sure that that would be included, if that's what you'd like.
I thought there was some, maybe it was in a narrative about.
It was in, it's in the staff report.
It's in a narrative, but it's not in the ordinance.
Yes, not actually.
It's in the staff report, it is not in the resolution.
Thank you, Stephanie, for double-checking that.
The intent was there, but the execution was not down.
As we talked about, screw the effort.
Add to my, add to my motion.
Go ahead, John.
I, I'm sorry, if we're going to allow low-level landscaping lighting, that would include lights for the American flag.
So there you go.
Yeah.
All right, so it's not necessary to address that specifically?
You already thought about it.
Oh, because it's not prohibited, because we could pull up the double negative.
Yep.
I would like, just.
For easiness, I think.
I would like to include that, just for the calling out the specifics, because sometimes flagpoles, people don't correlate that with landscaping.
Yeah.
Sure. Well, and isn't there a flag code that talks to this more specifically, and can't we just add?
State statute, I believe.
State statute, but it knows that most of them has to be downcast, that's why they make the top lighting on the landscape, or whether the flagpole goes to the top of it or whatever.
Yeah, and I, so, I don't know exactly how you would say that, but we would defer to this, to the flag code.
Yep. I believe it's if a flag is being flown, it has to be lit, essentially, at night.
Is this for all flags or just American flags?
Just American flag.
Yeah.
Pretty sure it's just an American one.
I was wondering if it might include the state, but I.
I don't believe so.
At least the, yeah. Because I know there's a kerfuffle in one of the HOAs where they wouldn't let them fly a POW flag, but they had to let them fly the American flag.
This might be a typo thing. I'm looking at page one seventy-four, part one, part, or one B. Should that be ensure proper installation, not insulation?
No, it is installation.
Installation, okay. I know there is both for lighting, so I just wanted to clarify that, because then it goes on about being installed, so that's why I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor from Dave related to.
But that includes, now, we do have the American flag.
American flag, and the low-level lighting is allowed.
I'll second.
That's what I have.
Yes, that's what I.
Landscaping, low-level lighting.
Landscaping, low-level lighting.
There's a lot of ooh-no going on, reverse, flip, skip, draw four.
All right, so we got, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
I'm abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining, okay.
Because I'm cranky.
You're abstaining because you're cranky.
I'm abstaining because I'm cranky about it.
That's good.
You can, I'm always abstaining from a vote if you'd like to, yes. Counselor Van Aston can abstain, yes.
Item P.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, I did not prepare a presentation for this. I figured I probably exhausted the information.
I'll make a motion.
I would like to just note one thing, I can't believe it would have any impact on it, but the version that was in your packet was altered slightly by MINDOT, and by, I mean slightly, they extended the completion date by three years. Only because it can be, I'm sorry.
It's a higher dollar amount as well.
Oh, they did, that's true, thank you.
So they gave us more money?
They did, they did adjust it because there was a shipping fee not included on the original purchase for the equipment, so they added that into the agreement amount, and then they also pushed it out to the five-year period, which is the maximum allowable. I still think we're only going to need about one year, but they're going to put it at five anyway, so.
So they gave us more money, and they're giving us more time?
Yes.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I'll still make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion carries five to zero. Onto item Q.
Oh, can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Not going to change anything, but in the, in the, in the breakdown of the costs, it mentions in a couple of places, add CO equals one hundred and seventy-four thousand something. What is a CO?
That's the change order.
Change order.
Yeah, so that's the actual construction of the improvements that was added to the city contract, so that was the change order amount. And then the forced account, the other one, that's the purchase of the equipment to be installed, the flashing lights, that was purchased outside of that contract.
Okay, so the, okay, that's, that's the only piece.
Still paid for through the grant. Everything's paid for through the grant.
No, that all worked out, I just didn't know what CO was in this context.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, yeah, item Q. Historic Village Sewer and Water.
So there has been kind of a repeated question, if you will, when there's discussions regarding the historic village, and I guess just so everybody's clear, when I'm referring to the historic village area, I'm referring to the northwesternmost part of the city that is sewer and watered, so that has utility services in it. So basically, the developed area, or the city lots within that portion of the city, so. But there's been a question, you know, what development can be supported and added to that system, or what can be redeveloped with a more intense use? So a couple of things that we know, there's very limited water, and that's primarily due to no storage, no meaningful storage. There's a two-thousand-gallon pneumatic tank that supplies pressure, but no reservoirs for firefighting or other means, and then there's limited sewer as well, and that's mostly limited by lift stations throughout the village that collect and transfer the flows, and then send it to Atsego for treatment ultimately. But both of those are limiting as they were designed for the conditions in two thousand when they were constructed. So there was a general investigation, someone in council might remember, in 2020, when we kind of looked at it and we said, okay, how many more connections could we get on the system? Came back very limited. I think we were somewhere around equivalent to maybe like a hundred homes or so to the sanitary, and you're already at your maximum for the water, so anything now is just kind of putting extra strain on there, so. And again, that's due to the storage.
Jason, when you say limited on the water, that's only fire suppression, right?
Yeah, yes, it's the storage.
Other than that, we've got plenty of capacity.
Yes, yeah, we can produce it, we just can't.
So we can get storage.
We just can't distribute it fast for very long at all.
Right.
So anything that needs a fire suppression system is out?
They would have to supply something similar to Public Works, big reservoirs on, on the They would have to supply something similar to Public Works, big reservoirs on, on the site.
So that.
Or Dayton storage.
So like our multifamily, commercial, I mean, so really we're limited to single family homes?
I thought we.
The new triflexes are what.
The new triflexes, so mayor members council, the new triflexes are sprinklers.
They're sprinklers.
Um, will the sprinklers work? Yes. Will they work for a long time? No.
Correct.
So, it is.
They could, that's a lot less.
Lot of volume.
Demand of a system than a sewer warehouse or.
Like a truck hooked up today.
Yeah. Yeah, so that would be a much simpler system and that could be supported, maybe even for the duration needed, but it, it could certainly not support anything commercial or large with a significant demand on the system. Uh, so two, in twenty twenty, we looked at it, but it was limited to, we could add about this much and you might have to do some improvements, but not a lot of detail or specificity behind any of the improvements. So, um, it's come to our attention lately that there's a desire for a better answer, if you will. What's actually needed in the area, what specific improvements can and should be accomplished to support development or redevelopment in the area? So we did put together a, a scope just to develop this plan. So it would essentially be to develop, and I'll just call it a utility master plan, so what system would be needed. Same as we've done for the entire city, but we would look at this one a little different because it was an existing place in place. So it would be a little bit of, you know, what's needed for upgrades to the system, so. You would identify the ultimate system for it and then we would use the existing system as a basis and from there identify, you know, which pipes need to be enlarged, which, how much storage is needed, um, what has to happen to the lift stations? Is there other options for river crossings for the, the wastewater to be directed? Things of that nature. And as a basis, you may be familiar, this is part of your adopted twenty forty comp plan. The histil, historic village framework plan issued on the screen. So that would be our basis unless there was a reason to do, to do other. But our thought was that was the intended land use for it, so we would just go with most likely the most conservative ranges within those areas and develop a system in which would be appropriate to service that in the future.
I thought this didn't make it into the twenty forty comp plan.
It did not. You're talking about the new, um, the original, um, one was in the twenty thirty-one and it's a reference in the twenty forty plan. To go back and look at the twenty thirty plan.
My apologies, I thought this was actually.
And then I thought we had actually decided not to use this to set any, not that I disagree, cause I, I understand where you're going, because right now our comp plan, it doesn't do this.
So we had, yeah, we did redo mayor members of council, we redid this historic village framework plan twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, something like that? Um, and re, yeah, and recompleted it, essentially relooked at it again and then.
But then we didn't adopt.
Um. It may not.
You adopted it, but you said just shelve it.
We accepted it.
You accepted it, yes. But it did not go on any sort of.
I understand what you're doing, cause you got something.
It's something to.
Yep, yep.
Estimate flows from, so.
Yeah, and that leads me to my point of confusion on this, because this shows a lot of medium or higher density. And that may be the, the conservative way to plan for this, right? But in the scope of work, it talks about parcels are assumed to be low density residential. Is that just referring to the two PID numbers that are south of the village?
I think that's all stuff.
Um, that is what's currently proposed, just that those would be considered for development to be added on, so we look at those specifically. So yes, that is, that is referencing, and I'll just say the Burden's properties, where they are contemplating something in alignment with the A three district.
Okay.
So we were, we did wanna make sure we were at least.
Other areas, you're looking at potentially more density.
Yes.
And more water use.
Yep, exactly. Yep. It was limited to just those.
I guess, yeah, I was confused. Why would we include those two properties?
Just if the, if council wanted to choose, um, to, to service those if or when they're constructed or to, to plan for those being sewered with this instead of waiting until the sewer comes all the way from the south. Again, our thought on it was it doesn't have to actually become a reality, but it just provides additional capacity to leave the option open.
So those would get sewored, obviously by Atsego. How does the Met Council come into play then?
Um, looking at an option, can we redirect any of these flows to the Met Council system? Or would we want to take advantage because it hasn't been an option previously with the new plant going in in Rogers? Looking at extending the service area into the northeast part of Dayton, sorry, northwest part of Dayton. And that would actually alleviate some of the capacity limitations that might occur to the east and to the south. This is a much bigger picture that will become part of your comp plan revision, but that's our thinking behind that is to start looking at those options.
Yeah.
This is all gonna be a long time from now.
Well, not, not if we do something like that. But yes, I, 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 I guess I don't. Yeah.
I also wonder what our current agreement is with Atsego as it relates to sewer. I mean, I guess it's as much as we can shove through the pipe, but.
It's the pipe, I thought was the problem.
The, the pipe would be the limitation. Um, I don't know the numbers, but I'll, I'm confident that we are only using a reasonably small portion of our available capacity.
Yeah, mayor, mayor members council, I did have a conversation with, um, the city administrator about Seagull last week and just met, referenced this to make sure that we were all good, and he referenced that we were at like twenty percent of our allowable usages for sewer capacity within that plant. They just redid that plant recently and spent boohoo bucks to get that thing upgraded. So they said they have plenty of capacity for us and please send us more.
Is that the limiting factor, like I said?
It is all about the pipes. The pipes in the ground are the limiting factor.
The pipes and the pumps.
And the pumps.
So the lift station, the DNR lift, we call it the DNR lift, that bolt landing, that's the main one that pumps everything.
That can be upgraded. Pipes not so much, right?
Well, I made a cut with the new pipe installation, but a lot bigger of an undertaking, cause it's a pretty long.
Cause I know there's occasionally been talks on a couple of properties about some sort of a, you know, uh, I don't know if you'd call it a senior's living area, considering there's no bus service, that'd be hard. But, I don't know.
Even just a coffee shop, they can't put it in, cause they don't have fire suppression.
Yes, yep, at the time, right now they do not, correct.
But I mean, like, that really, like, I appreciate that the whole thing isn't gonna change for years, but right now we have places and people, I think, who would be interested in doing things and can't, and so.
Yeah, but that's just water storage. I shouldn't say does, cause it's still a couple of million bucks.
Couple of million bucks.
But it's not sewer.
But I mean, I think that's the point of the plan though, right, is to know what is that part tag and could be.
And then we'll have the master plan, so if there is a specific project in a specific area, we could see, okay, what of these improvements are needed to support that? So it could be a phased approach on the, on that. Uh, the farther away it is, probably the more challenging, because there's, there's actually three lift stations, so if the more it has to pass through, the more upgrades that are gonna be.
This, uh, this was brought up during our strategic plan discussion.
Yeah.
And this is hence why it's in front of you tonight, just cause one of our goals and strategic initiatives this year are, one of the action items this year was to do the historic village utility plan. So that's why it's in front of you tonight as well.
And is this good for ten years?
It's good until you wanna change it. I mean, it would be the framework if, I mean, if, if you came in and said, no, we wanna put commercial everywhere or, you know, apartments everywhere, it would change. Again, we'd have a, probably a better system in place where the revisions would be simpler than starting from scratch.
But I mean, all of that you just said isn't, is, it's not gonna happen in, in any, anywhere near future.
Sure.
And a coffee shop or cafe could go in.
Yeah. Yeah, cultural resalonic, the answer would be as long as the usage is at this level or less, it would, it would be applicable. If you see someone that's gonna be more intense than this, then we'd have to do some sort of reanalysis of it.
Well, and to me, I think it was, it would be good to know, because for example, let's say, you know, the road gets improved, the county, cause the county is working on, um, Dayton River Road, right? And is there talk of going as, at some point?
Not this far west, but.
No.
But I mean.
Eventually they will.
Eventually, right? I guess, obviously, not soon. But if we know in advance, hey, wait a minute, when they've ripped the road up, we need to put a bigger pipe in, so like, let's be paying attention for when that comes.
That's thirty years away.
Um, but like, I just, I, I would think it'd be worth having at least a plan in place.
The county just did that road here a couple, three years ago.
Did they?
Not that, not that portion. It was two thousand the last time that road's been redone and that was when the.
That's when the sewer went in.
That's when the sewer went in, in the s, two thousand.
That's when they rebuilt.
Resurfaced here.
It was resurfaced, yeah.
Well, that was, that stopped at Brockton though. That didn't go any further south or north.
No, the old village.
Old village, had brand new Tara, right down Main Street.
It was just before, we know that, cause it was just before Heritage Day. And we were worried that it wasn't.
In what year was that? Had to have been a number of years ago.
Well, I know it, couldn't have been more than twelve.
Sure, twelve years ago.
Um, are you opposed to doing this study?
I'm, I'm just wondering what new information we're gonna get. Cause we already have a ballpark of what it can support.
This would be, yeah, this would be actual analysis. So then the reason, like I said, the reason why this is being brought forward to you is cause this is one of your items that you gave us as an action item, so. As city staff, we follow your action items and hence why it's in front of you tonight. If you don't do that, that's fine, but we should remove it out of the strategic plan we just passed four months ago, five months ago.
Would he, uh, here's, here's a good way to answer this. If a twelve or fourteen unit triflex came into play in the next three years, do we have enough water suppression for that?
I don't know, you'd have to do a study. I mean, that's, that's the purpose of, I mean, that is the purpose of this. And we get that question, that was my first bullet. We get the question, what can be supported, and we don't really know. We know there's not.
Well, I thought, that's, that, the look you did a couple of years ago did give us a ballpark.
Like a hundred units?
Yeah.
Are we gonna?
And I'm only talking about fourteen.
Yeah.
Twelve or fourteen.
Well, I, I mean, you, yeah, you could look at doing up to a hundred and hope for the best. I mean, it's, I mean, all of it comes with risk. I mean, you're.
Sure.
It's a, the, the system was designed for what existed in council.
Fifty in the next ten years.
There was not additional capacity provided.
I, I feel like we have to do it, because we've got pretty, I mean, your best guess, right, at what's available. But if somebody's gonna invest hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars into a development, I think they deserve a better answer. I think you'd wanna give a better answer.
Maybe can bank it, I guess.
I, I think if we're talking about higher density buildings, then we're talking about sprinklers. And I'm hearing we don't have the capacity to supply them for any length of time, so that's already a problem. And I think we should identify that in a real way. Maybe it helps us with grants going forward.
Yeah, as long as it's good for ten years or so, I mean, I don't wanna spend forty thousand now and then two years from now spend fifty to do it again.
The only thing that would require updates is if you had a significant change in land use. And again, those modifications are easier than, uh, once you have a design in place, those modifications are a lot easier to tackle.
All right, need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no? Carries five to zero. And with that, we are on work.
See you in two weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Oh, three weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Three weeks.
Extra three weeks.
Or better yet, coming too.
Scott, that's sweet.
Okay.
You'll need to read that, mayor, thank you very much.
Pursuant to MN statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three C three, a closed section shall be conducted, develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property located at one five five two zero Landale Lane North, Dayton, Minnesota, five five three two seven PID zero five dash one twenty dash twenty-two dash twenty-two dash zero 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 three.
You wanna gavel over here?
Oh, sure.
Regular session and we concluded that we would hand over the activity to DDA. Yes?
We give direction to staff, correct?
Yep, got it. That's it.
All right, so with that, if there are no... That's it. If there are no objections, we're adjourned. We're adjourned.